Good evening. Good evening, buenas noches, and welcome. Tonight is the first of two nights that we have set aside to hear from the community on the superintendent's fiscal year FY 2025 operating budget proposal to the Board of Education. Tonight's hearing will be broadcast live on television and MCPs media. As always, board members are looking forward to hearing and giving thoughtful consideration to your input as we prepare to review and take action on the superintendent's recommendation. Before we begin, I will ask board members to introduce themselves. Dr. McKnight is also joining us this evening, and we have several MCPs staff members joining us as well, so let's begin with introductions.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Yang, District Three. Glad to see all of you tonight.
Good evening. Good to see you all. Shebra Evans, District Four.
Hello. Good to see everybody. Rebecca Smundrowski, District Two.
Good evening, everyone. Lynn Harris, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm an at-large member of the Board.
Good evening, and I'm Carla Silvestre. I'm president of the Board.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you. Brenda Wolf, District Five.
Good evening, buenas noches. Grace Rivera Owen, District One.
Hello, everyone. Sami Said, student member of the Board, and really excited to see some students testifying here today.
Dr. McKnight, would you like to introduce yourself and your team?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So glad that you are able to come in person on this cold evening to come out and share testimony. We look forward to hearing it. I am superintendent, and I am joined here with my executive team here on the dais. It's Mr. Hall, our COO, and our deputy, acting deputy superintendent, Dr. Betty Collins. And then I will extend an opportunity for the leadership members who are here to my right at the table to introduce themselves and their positions.
Good evening. Laverne Kimball, and I'm the acting chief in the Office of School Support and Well-Being.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Pugh, chief academic officer.
Good evening. Stephanie Sharon, chief of Strategic Initiatives and Technology.
Good evening. Damon Montsleoni, Associate Superintendent in the Office of School Support and Well-Being, and I oversee well-being and student services.
Good evening. Libby Rogalvay, I'm the Executive Director to the Deputy Superintendent.
Welcome, everyone. I'm Tom Clausen, the Executive Director of the Office of Finance.
Good evening. Ivan Alfonso Windsor, Director of Management and Budget.
Good evening, everyone. Rob Riley, Associate Superintendent of Finance.
Thank you. The order of speakers is listed on the agenda that is available on the Board's website. Board members will have the opportunity to hear from the community via in-person testimony or by audio or video presentations. Written testimony of those who signed up for today's hearing has been made available to the public and for board members to review on Board docs on our website. The Board's second hearing on the proposed operating budget is Thursday, January 25th at 6:00 p.m. The Board's next operating budget work session will be held at 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. We will take tentative action on the proposed operating budget on Thursday, February 22nd, 2024, during the Board's regularly scheduled board meeting. I believe we have over 40 speakers tonight, so let's begin with our speakers who are here in person. When your name is called, please approach the podium and push the flat button below the microphone to turn it on and begin speaking. Please speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Our first speaker is Zora Veiland and Mary Goldthorpe. Just turn on your mic.
Hi, my name is Zora Veiland.
And my name is Mary Goldthorpe.
I'm the vice president of SGA.
And I'm the Director of Leadership at Loederman Middle School, but in reality, we're just students.
We're to testify how the lack of funding for our school has made it impossible for serious issues such as our HVAC system to be resolved quickly.
Resolving in time out of school, classes being canceled, and our safety being compromised. On November 27th, a Wednesday upon entry into the building, we sat in our performance space, and after sitting there with no idea what was happening, we were evacuated into the neighboring school, Weller Road Elementary. Late students were turned away at the door and instructed to go home. Upon arrival at Weller Road, many students were picked up and taken home by parents, guardians, and siblings. Next, there were no updates on the situation or instructions on our next steps. More importantly, teachers, administration, students, and parents didn't know the cause of the evacuation, the seriousness of the situation, or if the school was even safe.
We now know that this evacuation was due to a possible gas leak because of the current state of our HVAC system. For understanding when we refer to an HVAC system, this is what is responsible for our school's heating, ventilation, and cooling. The solution to this problem was to turn off heating in parts of the schools and the cooling in others. Although this removed the gas smell from our building, it left certain classes reaching temperatures that created an environment where teachers couldn't teach and students couldn't learn. One class could have air blowing at 140 degrees, and another could have air blowing at 50 degrees, leaving many staff and students feeling uncomfortable and unsafe in the Loederman Building.
People can't be able to teach and learn in an environment where they don't feel safe, an environment with no heat, an environment where we could be evacuated at any moment.
Again, we, students and teachers alike, felt uncomfortable and unsafe in the building. A functional heating and cooling system is crucial during extreme weather conditions, as we've been seeing, as it's essential for maintaining a comfortable classroom temperature. With a new HVAC system, students and teachers will not have to worry about if the school is too cold or too hot, and it will prevent the type of situation that happened on November 27th from happening again. Putting bandages on an old system isn't working. It only masks the real issue. Our HVAC system is old and out of date, and if you believe that every student deserves a comfortable and safe learning environment, then it's time to take action.
So we ask that the Board consider moving our HVAC replacement up in your budget. Considering the issues we have stated and preventing further issues from arising, we understand that the cost of this replacement may be significant, but we believe that the benefits of investing in a new system far outweighs the cost. Ensuring that our building is the safest, most efficient, and most comfortable it can be should be the number one priority.
Sending children back to a school with a non-resolved gas leak is unsafe, immoral, and unethical. This situation caused many of your students to lose trust in their school system and feel unsafe and scared in their place of learning. Thank you for allowing us this space to be heard, and thank you in advance for moving the Loederman Middle School HVAC replacement up to Fister Year 2025. Thank you to those here in support, and thank you, Ms. Sylvester, Ms. Evans, Ms. Harris, Ms. Rivera Owen, Ms. Smundrowski, Ms. Wolf, Ms. Yang, and Mr. Said.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daksh Badri. Please come forward.
Hi, everyone. My name is Daksh Badri, and I'm an 11th grader from Wooton High School. I'm here today to speak about the lack of access, awareness, and funding for music education in MCPs. I am also here as the founder and co-director of Operations at a Helping Horn, a high-schooler-run youth organization that aims to increase awareness and funding for music education in MCPs and to provide free mentoring lessons for elementary and middle-school-age musicians. You might have heard from us at the last board meeting with two of our officers submitting testimonies last week. I have been a part of MCPs's instrumental music program ever since fourth grade, and I have loved every single second of it. Music taught me to take risks, learn in new ways, and it was a huge accelerator in my academic learning. According to the National Association for Music Education, schools with music programs have graduation rates of 90.2%, while areas with less access or a lack of a music program have rates of 72.1%. That is almost a jump of one-fifth of our student body. I am also the euphonium section leader in Wooton High School's marching band. Being in the marching band has allowed me to perform at so many different stages and calibers. With this, I have seen many Maryland high schools' music budgets, and I've noticed a large disparity between them and us. On January 15th, 2020, MCPs high school graduate Sidney Evans expressed a similar sentiment on this issue. Other schools traveled to competitions in charter buses and hired truck drivers to carry larger items, while my day-end directors, Ms. Ecklerly and Ms. Herman, had to hire bus drivers to drive us to competitions in school buses, rent a truck to carry larger props, and employ a parent volunteer to drive them every week. Next, I would like to talk about the 2024-25 operating budget proposed by the superintendent. The document only mentions the budget for instrumental music in elementary schools, so that is what I will be discussing today. The current proposed budget states that $44.5,000 will be allocated to instrumental music in all elementary schools in the county. With the 137 elementary schools we have in this county, that leaves each music teacher with only $325 to buy instruments, music, and teach over 50 children. This extremely low amount is the reason why instrumental music teachers buy and repair instruments with their own earnings to help their young learners thrive. With the amount of money that is proposed to be allocated for elementary schools, this simply cannot be done without some kind of loss for the student or the teacher. MCPs can learn more about how the funds they give to instrumental music are not sufficient within their schools, with young students and seasoned musicians alike having to share instruments that are decades older than them. This is why we at a Helping Horn believe that the instrumental music budget in MCPs should be increased to allow students of all ages to reap the benefits of music education. MCPs should also do more interactive research into how school-owned instruments are used and distributed among students, and a Helping Horn would gladly assist in this issue. Thank you so much, and I hope we can rectify this issue together.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Safran Stevens. Please come forward. Safran or Safran Stevens? Sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Okay, let's move on with Samantha Ross.
Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. McKnight. My name is Sam Ross, and I'm a junior at Montgomery Blair High School. Today, I would like to talk about the importance of social workers and funding for restorative justice practices. These items have been moved from ESAR, but we cannot bend to the possibility that they will not be fully founded by our county council partners. We must keep them and continue the MCPs idea that restoration is more important than discipline. We all know the number benefits of social workers, the dramatic decreases in suspensions and reoffenses for students who engage in restorative justice that have been shared with yourselves, the county council, and the public. The numbers speak for themselves. However, I want to put things in a more personal perspective, because these staff members interact with students and not numbers. My school's social worker is Emily Callahan. Ms. Callahan is one of the most outstanding, passionate, and resourceful members of the Blair community. The school-based social worker for all 25 high schools is still new, but in her first few years at Blair, Ms. Callahan has made her mark. In her small room on the third floor, she has a safe space for students who are going through a tough time. She checks in on her students she sees often. She swings by the counseling office to say hi, and she goes out into the hallway to share important information about wellness and services available to students. As someone who has used restorative justice with Ms. Callahan and a restorative justice specialist from Central Office to resolve minor issues between myself and other students and teachers, I can attest to the fact that restorative justice-based approaches are better in all regards than a discipline-only approach. I can also attest to the fact that it's a big change. It is a big shift. It is not easy. It will take funding, no matter how much we don't want to increase this year. Additionally, social workers are just one part of the team behind restorative justice in MCPs, even though I love Ms. Wallace with all my heart. Our stipended restorative justice coaches, central restorative justice instructional specialists, and staff training on restorative practices are all crucial to cementing restorative justice as the new normal practice in MCPs, lowering suspension and incident rates, and showing our students what it means to heal and not punish. Like I said earlier, I would also like to thank Mrs. Wallace and Mr. Ranby. Their hard work has shown how we can imagine the practices of MCPs in order to be more inclusive, student-focused, and, most importantly, effective, showing results when we need them, which is now. If we want to make real change in the well-being of students, we must keep our social workers, restorative justice positions, and these practices in place for this year and many to come. Thank you for your time. Please continue to fund our well-being-focused positions moving off ESAR, no matter how much I know you don't want to see that number go up.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Junie Kim. Please come forward.
Good evening to the Board of Education, and thank you for this opportunity to advocate for myself and other students in MCPs. My name is Junie Kim, the co-president at Watkins Mill for the Sophomore Class Council and a chapter lead for Young People for Progress. I am here to ask for MCPs to fund a full-time restorative justice coach at each middle school and high school. I would like to begin with sharing my experience with restorative justice. Restorative justice is a set of culture-shifting practices that allows students to repair harm and improve relationships through better communication. Last year, we had repeated conflicts between our teacher and us, the students. To resolve this issue, our teacher decided to set up a restorative justice circle every week so that we could share our voices. We had two restorative justice coaches, one who was another teacher, let's call them RJ Coach A, and another who was hired solely for the purpose as an RJ coach, and let's call them RJ Coach B. When we spoke with Coach A, we felt like we couldn't be honest because they were friends with our teacher, so they would be biased. We cannot expect teachers to serve both positions as an RJ coach and a teacher with other responsibilities, which is how they currently operate. When students were with RJ Coach B, students were more likely to open up. This neutrality is crucial in RJ practices, as it allows for an unbiased perspective that can help guide the conversation. Coach B helped repair harm in this conflict and rekindled the relationship between our teacher and our class. In this situation, restorative justice was the key to solving this conflict because it addressed the root of the problem, that students felt mistreated and that the teacher felt disrespected. When RJ is able to resolve the root of the problem, we are able to come to a more effective and lasting solution. This approach took away the need for short-term punitive punishments, such as suspensions and detentions, which should not address the underlying problem. Restorative justice has proven to decrease the school-to-prison pipeline as well. The Maryland Commission on School-to-Prison Pipeline and Restorative Practices found that schools in Maryland are too reliant on the zero-tolerance policy. This policy can make the school environment worse and might even hurt students. The Commission also found that this policy affects students of colors and students with disabilities more than others, leading to an increased number of these students being removed from school and entering the criminal justice system. Investing in a full-time RJ coach is not just a matter of improving the school environment. It's about enhancing the educational experience for our students. It's acknowledging that every student deserves a safe space to learn and grow, free from the fear of bias or discrimination. I asked MCPs to fully fund RJ coaches in each middle and high school. This is not just an investment in our schools, but an investment in our future. Thank you for your time and consideration. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Espinoza. There's a button underneath the microphone.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Dr. McKnight. I'm Tracy Espinoza, a sophomore at Watkins Mill High School and a Young People for Progress member. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak here tonight at the Board of Education. Tonight, I am here to ask that MCPs fund a full-time restorative justice coach at every middle and high school so that every student in MCPs can thrive. Last year, at my school, I tried logging into my school Chromebook, and my account had been temporarily disabled. I didn't know why, so I went to talk to my school's computer technician, and I saw that there was a line of students who have also been having similar issues. I and a specific group of students were pulled out from the rest. Our main similarity: we're Hispanic. We were accused of trying to gain access to blocked websites. Mind you, the previous day, my browsing history consisted of searching up eating disorders for a health class assignment. Instead of looking into the issue, the conversation immediately went from problem to accusations. I tried talking independently with the school administrator and was instead immediately shut down, unheard, and nearly suspended. That day taught me one thing: you never truly know the feelings of injustice until you have been at the receiving end. At that moment, I felt helpless. This was from the very person who claimed to have the interest of students in mind. Yet, when it came to simply listening to a student's side of the story, ignorance showed through. Thankfully, this is more of a minor situation compared to the hundreds of unfair disciplinary instances that occur throughout MCPs, which contribute to students falling into the school-to-prison pipeline, especially with something as severe as suspension or even expulsion. Students all across MCPs face issues with peers, teachers, or administrators, and when the conversation turns punitive, we need someone to turn to. We, students, need someone to talk to. We need a full-time restorative justice coach in all schools. Restorative justice is a set of culture-shifting practices that foster a more positive and inclusive environment while also allowing students to repair harm through better communication. By implementing full-time restorative justice coaches, schools can ensure that problems are solved at the root, and it doesn't happen again, while still holding students accountable for their actions. With the current extracurricular coaches that we have, some students find it difficult to even find time talking to a coach and be heard. In such a diverse school system, we cannot keep perpetrating a cycle of injustice and bias.
Thank you. Thank you. We have your testimony. Our next speaker is Urban Fernando.
Hello, everyone. My name is Evan Fernando, a freshman at Watkins Mill High School, and I'm a member of YPP, which stands for Young People for Progress. Thank you for giving me the honor to speak here tonight at the Board of Education. I ask that MCPs fund a full-time restorative justice or RJ coach at every middle and high school. I want to start by telling everyone about my experience with unfair discipline and how RJ could have avoided this outcome. In middle school, I went to a majority-white school, teachers and students, and just for background information, I'm an extreme extrovert, and I love talking to my friends. In the mornings, we sit by the lockers until the first bell rings to go to first period, and I was talking to my friends. One of my teachers, who doesn't usually let me participate in class, had come up to me and told me that I had lunched detention because of something he heard out of context from my conversation with my friend. This alarmed me because I've never had detention, and I was confused because he didn't hear the full story of what I was trying to say. No matter how much I tried to explain the situation, he wouldn't allow me to. This would be a place where RJ could be implemented if I had known what it was, but unfortunately, I did not have a restorative justice coach or anyone similar to go to to help me in this situation. Restorative justice is a set of culture-shifting practices that promote a positive, inclusive school environment. When it is used as an alternative to punitive display measures, students who have done something wrong are confronted about their actions. The RJ coach listens to all sides of the story, and they work with the students to repair harm and find a solution to the problem. RJ includes disciplinary measures like community service learning hours or making a presentation to explain why what they did was harmful. Suspensions aren't the answer to helping a student learn from their mistakes. Suspensions exacerbate the school-to-prison pipeline, which is a process Suspensions exacerbate the school-to-prison pipeline, which is a process where students who face more disciplinary action are more likely to end up in the criminal justice system. Schools that have previously included restorative justice in their culture had reduced rates of suspensions, particularly for Black students. As of October 19, 2023, Black suspensions in MCPS's focused restorative justice schools were decreased by 41%. Restorative justice should be expanded because it allows students to learn from their mistakes and take accountability without having to be punished in a way that harms their education. Unfortunately, not many students know what restorative justice is, who their restorative justice coach is, and how to use it if they find themselves in a situation where their actions aren't being thoroughly talked about. That is why I'm asking MCPS to fund a full-time restorative justice coach at every middle school and high school. Thank you for your time, and have an amazing rest of your evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tawobstak Kasa. Please come forward. I might be mispronouncing this terribly, Tawobstak Kasa. Our next speaker is Hanan Miles. It's an audio testimony. Please play the audio.
Hello, my name is Hanan Miles, and I am a current MCPS senior. I am here to request additional funding for full staffing of restorative justice coaches in every middle and high school in MCPS. First, I want to thank the Board for its support of restorative justice and Superintendent McKnight for the consistency in RJ funding, which is super important. In school, I've witnessed many conflicts that could have used external support, but instead, they were ignored and allowed to fester until things got physical, in which case, school security got involved, both parties were in physical restraints, and nothing had been solved. This happens far too often in our schools, and it needs to stop. We need to start at the elementary and middle school level, implementing RJ practices so that by the time students reach an age where they naturally encounter more conflict, they're prepared to take it on healthily. As a childcare worker, I find myself using restorative justice to resolve conflict between kids, and it's a great method, but it can't just be taken on individually. This is why schools need at least one full-time restorative justice coach to apply the curriculum before problems occur, as well as during. Restorative justice creates more empathetic kids, who are more willing to grow and change harmful behaviors. It also creates a more equitable school system. It's proven that suspension rates drop when schools practice restorative justice, especially for Black students. Therefore, I urge the Board of Education to ask for additional funding to restorative justice, to hire full-time RJ coaches in every middle and high school in the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I will now pause to see if my colleagues have any clarifying questions. If not, we can move forward. Any lights on? Please turn on your lights. Okay, moving on, our next speaker is Diego Uriburu. Please come forward. It's on.
It's on. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. McKnight and wonderful members of the Board. My name is Diego Uriburu, and I'm a proud member of the Black and Brown Coalition and also of identity. I think it's an understatement to say that MCPS is facing a monumental crisis, proportions that I have not seen. As I've said before, this crisis has been in the making for decades. From my perspective, many people are not willing to make decisions that have been moved forward and forward until now, we're dealing with, as I said, a big crisis. The Black and Brown Coalition had a forum back in November, and it was attended by around 800 Black and Brown families, and the motto of the forum was that we must address literacy now. During the forum, MCPS presented data on DIBELS. Congratulations on the wonderful accomplishments that DIBELS is attaining, particularly in the lower grades, well, it's only for the lower grades. At the same time, we're extremely concerned about alarming data on fifth grade, where 60% of Blacks and 70% of Latinos are not proficient in reading. When we look at data regarding English language learners, learners is even more and more alarming. And I'm here because MCPS needs to make some difficult decisions in the months to come, probably every day. But any strategy to be successful must take into account and work with parents, particularly parents of those who are struggling the most, in this case, are Black, Brown, and Poor. During the forum, we talked and we asked MCPS to please consider implementing an early alert system, because the majority of our parents do not know if their children or when their children are falling behind, because they read, some of the report cards are quite complicated to read. But if you see an A or a B, we don't know that our child is reading two grade levels below. So we're not alarmed, and therefore, we do not advocate. Therefore, an early alert system must be implemented. But that alone will not make it. We're also, on behalf of the parents, we are requesting that a plan be developed for each one of the students that's falling behind, and that the plan is shared and hopefully cosigned by the parents, so that the parents can be part of the solution. And then, we might have support in order to make these plans doable, or implemented for each one of the children. An additional issue is that decisions that MCPS is going to make now regarding the budget and how it's implemented must be guided by the values of equity. If we have to make cuts, then the cuts should not impact those who need these services, the educational services, the most. If we need to align resources, those resources must be aligned to benefit those who lost the most learning, who are falling the most behind. We're also thinking about interventions, offer summer school. I'm pleased to say that we will focus on high-impact schools, but what happens also with those who are in the schools that come after high impact, with large proportions of Black and Brown students who are not doing well? But that alone will not make it. The Black and Brown Coalition have testified many times about the need for MCPS to become more culturally responsive, more anti-racist. We know that we advertise summer school as an example, and that only 30% of those who need it the most attend. But the majority of the parents don't think their children need it because they see that they have As or Bs, they don't know that they're way behind, and they don't understand the importance of interventions, be it summer school or tutoring or whatever it may be. So we have to make an effort to communicate with these parents so that they understand what's at stake for the well-being of their children, current and future, if they make this intervention or if they don't. So we urge you to please consider these recommendations. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Byron Johns. Please come forward.
Good evening, Dr. McKnight, members of the Board. My name is Byron Johns. I'm coming here today representing the NAACP Parents Council and the Black and Brown Coalition. As our county navigates the ever-evolving challenges facing education, it is crucial that MCPS remains steadfast in our commitment to providing the best possible learning environment for all of our students, especially those that are underserved. Today, I stand before you to advocate for three key initiatives that I believe will significantly enhance the quality of education in our district. First and foremost, I urge the superintendent and Board to continue to remain steadfast in focusing on literacy and math and the teaching and learning improvements. The foundation of academic and career success lies in strong proficiency in these fundamental subjects. We applaud the glimmers of hope etched in the most recent kindergarten to second-grade DIBELS data, unveiling the promise of significant improvements for students in those foundational years. Yet, the shadows loom large from the MSDE data revealing that for grades three and beyond, nearly 60% of Black students and over 70% of Brown students are not proficient in reading, and even worse, in math, a clarion call to confront our academic crisis that demands priority. Strategies and investments in literacy and math coaches, learning specialists, resource support teachers must be protected from being under-resourced or cut, and fully aligned to the schools and students with greatest need. Implement it with fidelity and built upon to reach our older students, lest we squander years of investments and the futures of these children. In addition, at the Black and Brown Literacy Forum in November, which you just heard about from Diego, we proposed the implementation of an early warning system coupled with individualized student literacy success plans. Identifying struggling students early and tailoring interventions to meet their specific needs, especially for those well below the grade-level standards, is essential for the academic growth and the district's goal of being an equitable, world-class system. This personalized approach will not only identify learning gaps promptly, but will also empower educators and parents to partner in identifying what specific resources and interventions are needed, how to optimally allocate resources for targeted supports, and identifying resource gaps. This will also foster accountability at all levels. Furthermore, investing in the development of innovative teaching practices is crucial for keeping pace with the evolving educational landscape. We have seen incredible invasions occurring by teachers and school leaders across the district. Stories like the work of staff-development teacher Rachel Mann and Principal Elisa Royal at Oakland Terrace that we heard last August, amazing work. And more recently, we heard the work of algebra teacher Kristen Cole, supported by Principal Renee Johnson at Blair. However, each time we hear about these amazing efforts, the question comes up, how do we scale these innovations to improve performance across the district? And answers are few. I propose the district allocate resources to identify, nurture, and scale innovative teaching methods that have shown promising outcomes. By systematically leveraging these practices and incorporating them into our classrooms, we can create a more dynamic and engaging learning environment. Let us commit to a district-wide embrace of continuous improvement processes. Investing in professional development programs that empower educators to adopt and adapt innovative teaching practices, which result in more productive student outcomes, especially for our underserved students. By fostering a culture of continuous improvement, we not only enhance the learning experience of our students, but we also create a community of educators dedicated to staying at the forefront of educational best practices. With that, I will end my testimony, and the rest I've submitted, you'll have electronically.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christine Handy. Please come forward.
Good evening. On behalf of the Montgomery County Association of Administrators and Principals, MACAP, I wish to express gratitude for the diligent effort that district leaders have committed in crafting an operating budget that strives to meet the diverse needs of our students, staff, and the school system as a whole. Acknowledging the formidable challenges arising from economic constraints and the absence of ESAR dollars, which played a crucial role in post-pandemic service provision, I understand the intricate nature of the decisions required for resource allocation. Within this complex landscape, it is imperative to commend the Board's thoughtful consideration of the Office of Human Resources and Development in the budget. Recognizing its pivotal role in sustaining our district during demanding periods of recruitment and retention, we emphasize that it is vital to maintain the integrity of this office. We assert that our staffing employees play a critical role in the labor-intensive hiring process. Thus, it is paramount that OHRD remains intact. Moreover, with the anticipation of hiring more new administrators than ever before, we underscore the significance of leadership development and the onboarding process for these administrators as an essential element for continued success of our district. Again, it is imperative that all departments related to staffing, onboarding, and leadership development remain intact. Allow me to address specific areas within the budget that MACAP deems as imperative non-negotiables. Support for special education services. Given the significant learning losses experienced by students receiving special education services during the pandemic, coupled with the challenges faced by our staff in implementing mandated services, we advocate for the continued inclusion of an additional special education supervisor. This is key to address manageable school caseloads and ensure effective support. Assistant school administrators and teacher leaders. MACAP fully endorses the inclusion of the additional assistant school administrators and teacher leaders in the budget. These positions were previously grant-funded. The positive impact witnessed over the past two years in schools that previously had only one administrator, the principal, is noteworthy. This support has positively influenced students, staff, instruction, testing, service appearance, and overall school operations. Directors of the Office of School Support and Well-being. Drawn on research from the Wallace Foundation, which highlights research on the effectiveness of principal supervisors with caseloads they recommend between 12 to 13 schools, we emphasize the need to address the existing caseload disparities. In our district, the average school caseload for our directors ranges from 17 to 21 schools for each director. While neighboring Baltimore County maintains an average of 14, Prince George's County an average of 13, and Frederick County, an average of 13. To enhance student achievement and bolster the quality of educational leadership, MACAP supports the addition of three directors in the Office of School Support and Well-being. This strategic addition aims to reduce the caseload of directors, enabling them to focus on supporting schools through instructional leadership, data analysis, leadership development, and addressing crisis and issues that arise within school communities. Test coordination support. Over the past four years, we have consistently requested assistance with test coordination, a responsibility that has grown significantly. The absence of consideration for this in the budget places undue strain on assistant principals and school leaders, who must manage this task alongside the other complex responsibilities that they have. Full implementation of union agreements. MACAP advocates that the final budget reflect the full implementation of our three unions' salary and compensation agreements. In a landscape where competitive wages are essential for recruiting and retaining high-quality education professionals, honoring these agreements, MCEA, SEIU, and MACAP is paramount. In conclusion, I implore the Board of Education to advocate for the necessary funds from the County Council to operate an exceptional school district. Returning MCPS to its flagship status requires the appropriate level of funding. Members of the Board of Education, rest assured that MACAP stands ready to advocate alongside you for the full support of the proposed budget with the County Council. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sally Murick. Please come forward.
It's on? Thank you. Good evening, Dr. McKnight, President Silvestre, and members of the Board of Education. I'm Sally Murick, one of the four vice presidents of the Paraeducator Chapter of SEIU Local 500, representing the approximately 4,000 paraeducators who daily support our teachers and students. And in my day job, I'm the paraeducator program manager, organizing paraeducator trainings and advocating for paraeducators throughout the system on many levels. I'm here this evening to address my concern with the superintendent's proposed operating budget, as it fails to address several ongoing issues with recruiting, retaining, and respecting the work of our paras and all supporting services staff. First, I'll address the para pay. It's not a fair wage compared to the work performed and the educational requirements for the position. The para job description states under the educational requirements that an A-A degree is required, with a four-year degree being preferred. Sadly, MCPS is not offering wages to recruit people with these requirements or any people into the position. People can earn more working in retail businesses and driving buses than delivering and supporting instruction. A classification study on the para is about to commence, and we hope MCPS will recognize that the old pay grades for this position are just that: old. There must be a multi-level differentiated pay structure established for paras. We hope- We hope there's money in the proposed budget to properly fund a revised para pay structure so we can fill the over 200 vacancies that continue to exist and retain those individuals that we have hired. In today's economy, people have choices, and we want MCPS to be one of them. Next, MCPS needs to support students and respect paras by paying paras to work seven and a half hours a day instead of anywhere from one to seven hours. Seven and a half hours supports students from arrival to dismissal and hopefully allows for some planning time with a teacher that the para supports. Yes, you heard correctly, paras are not required to have planning time with or without a teacher. They are scheduled by necessity of the slim hourly allocations to work minimal hours. Another area where the proposed budget is in error is the continuation of what is labeled TPT, Temporary Part-Time. In the paraeducator world, that means you are hired to work the same schedule at the same school for the duration of the school year, anywhere from your one to seven hours, and yet you are not an MCPS employee. You are not eligible for any benefits, health or otherwise. My submitted testimony provides more information on that subject. This budget is a disinvestment in our people in respect and growing on our own individuals choose to make a career at MCPS. It allows for reductions in professional development and supporting the growth of our employees. It demonstrates a lack of respect in them and the work they do. Speaking personally, funding that I'm allocated to pay trainers and participants for facilitating and attending the new paraeducator orientation in October each year, which several of you have so graciously attended, was reduced by half. In addition, dismissing the positive impact that the Career Pathways Program has had on our supporting services is short-sighted and contrary to all the talk about MCPS being a self-renewing organization and investing in our employees. Moving the work to individuals that already have full-time jobs to take on additional full-time work is not attainable. We all know the program will lose and MCPS will lose. This program is just now hitting its high mark and is so promising so many areas of MCPS's operational and instructional needs. This small investment is showing great rewards in MCPS employee growth and culture. Once again, we are feeling the disrespect and being of lower importance. Remember, if we don't work, MCPS doesn't work. Recall the three-legged stool analogy and stop sawing on our leg. Revisit the priorities in this budget and return the funding to the programs that impact our staff and students. I'm yielding the rest of my time to a testimony that was written by a para who has now become a teacher, which is being read by one of our other VPs of the para chapter, Ms. Noelia Torres.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. McKnight and board. The following testimony is, as you heard, I will be reading. My name is Noelia Torres, and I work for Infants and Toddlers East County. This abbreviated version of the testimony, you guys also have copies of the full testimony. This paraeducator has gone and benefited from the Career Pathways Program. The, I'm sorry. The paraeducator, as we know, comes from very diverse backgrounds and harbor a burning passion to transition into teaching. However, the journey from paraeducator to teacher is not without, with challenges. The Career Pathway Program provides the one-on-one support needed to break down these barriers. This personalized support took various forms, such as mentoring, personalized professional development, like the training how to become a personalized teacher, how to become an MCPS teacher, help with resume writing and resume and application support, and also helping with getting extended time on the praxis.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Ciara Caprera. Please come forward. And Janice Campbell.
Good evening, President Silvestri, Vice President Harris, Board of Education members, and Dr. McKnight. I am Janice Campbell.
And I am Ciara Caprera, and we are the co-presidents of the Montgomery County School Psychologists Association. We would like to express our gratitude and support for maintaining the current number of school psychologist positions in the 2024 to 2025 operating budget. We have appreciated the collaboration with MCPS leaders and the Board of Education and steps that we have taken together to find solutions to challenges with recruitment and retention of school psychologists and MCPS over the past few years. Through collaborative, data-based, and solution-oriented decision-making, MCPS hired 19 school psychologists for a net increase of about 16 school psychologists for the 2023 to 2024 school year. Those hires include some school psychologists returning to MCPS after spending time working in other districts. We are hopeful that our continued partnership in developing recruitment and retention strategies for school psychologists will result in another successful hiring year, the 2024 to 2025 school year.
Our specialized training in mental health, learning, and behavior provides school psychologists a strong knowledge base for providing a variety of services. We assess students to identify their strengths and needs in the areas of learning, social skills, emotional well-being, and behavioral development. We provide direct interventions to students from well-being check-ins to direct instruction for executive functioning, social skills, or coping skill development. We consult with families, teachers, and other staff members in order to help students thrive in different settings. We support students in crisis and contribute to school safety efforts. We also support and actively contribute to district-wide initiatives and events. School psychologists are uniquely qualified staff to provide these supports and much more.
It sounds like a lot, doesn't it? Now, think about the fact that each MCPS school psychologist provides all these services for two, three, or more school communities. With the current budget recommendation to maintain all of the existing school psychologist positions and the opportunity to hire more school psychologists, it is clear to us that you recognize this high workload and that you desire, just as we do, to fill any open positions that we have. The National Association of School Psychologists recommends one school psychologist for every 500 students in order to provide those comprehensive services and supports we previously mentioned. Each school psychologist that we hire and retain brings us closer to this recommended ratio. Based on the September 2023 student enrollment numbers and the number of currently filled school psychologist positions, the average school psychologist-to-student ratio in MCPS is 1 to 1,374. That ratio has improved approximately 13% from two years ago, when the previous MCSPA co-presidents reported to you an average ratio of 1 to 1,574. We thank you once again for the support and steps that have been taken over the past two years that have had a measurable change.
As school psychologists, we would be remiss if we did not wish you well and encourage you to take care of your own health and well-being as you enter this understandably stressful time. We won't do this for you now, but as a reminder, even taking a minute to practice deep breathing and grounding techniques that help you stay in the present can be highly beneficial. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to our continued work together toward hiring more school psychologists in future years.
Thank you. Always good advice. Our next speaker is a video testimony from Ellie Meyerstein. Please play the video.
My name is Ellie Meyerstein. I am a senior at Walter Johnson High School and a resident of Rockville. I am submitting this testimony on behalf of Jews United for Justice, which mobilizes the Jewish community to take action in support of racial and economic justice, to ask for additional funding for full staffing of restorative justice coaches in every middle and high school in MCPS. I would like to start off by saying thank you to the Board of Education for your support of restorative justice so far, and thank you to Dr. McKnight for including funding to maintain the near-current status of restorative justice in the operating budget. Although I'll be leaving the Montgomery County Public School System in a few months, I believe it's incredibly important that we continue to give students the opportunity to learn how to properly communicate and solve problems collectively. Working to make the world a better place is a big part of my Jewish identity. I believe we must therefore ensure young students are given second chances to do better instead of being arrested, suspended, and separated from their school community. Students who are suspended once are more likely to be suspended in the future and are more likely to drop out. We also know that suspension or other punishments won't change behavior unless we teach them how to behave in the future. MCPS can end this cycle of harm and punishment by fully investing in restorative justice. Restorative justice is a series of programs, both proactive and responsive, proven according to our county's own data, to reduce the number of suspensions in schools and reduce the chances that students will reengage in harm. Why would we deny students full access to such an incredible opportunity? Like it or not, we are the future. That means we need the skills to properly communicate and be a part of the community. Unfortunately, restorative justice in Montgomery County isn't reaching its full potential. I attend Walter Johnson, but I haven't heard anything about the restorative justice initiatives at my school or from any of my friends in other public high schools. Until I discussed it with JUJ, I didn't even know that restorative justice was at my school. At the very least, I think students should be receiving community emails about changes that are implemented at MCPS, like the availability of restorative programs. These programs can't help us unless we know they exist. Mistakes made in high school shouldn't shadow kids for the rest of their lives. I truly believe restorative justice will teach students better and make schools a better and safer place. My younger sister will be going to WJ in just two years, and I want to give her the safe and equitable education she and all of her peers deserve. I, JUJ, and our partners at Racial Justice Now and Young People for Progress urge the Board of Education to fund full-time restorative justice coaches in every middle and high school and to invest in implementing restorative justice with integrity so that those who come after me can thrive in MCPS.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn to my colleagues to see if they have any questions or comments. Please turn your light on. Okay, we'll move on with our next speaker, Debbie Orsak. Please come forward.
Yeah, old lady glasses. All right. Oh, I'm still on. Woo! All right. Good evening, President Silvestri, Vice President Harris, members of the board, Dr. McKnight, and the MCPS and board staff. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with all of you. I am Debbie Orsak, the president of MCCPTA, but more importantly, I am the mother of three MCPS graduates and one current MCPS student. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of all of the PTSA communities in MCPS, parents, teachers, and students. And before I begin, I want to commend and thank the students that have already testified tonight. Our children are so intelligent and insightful, and they are our bright stars for the future. Thank you. And I would like to begin my testimony, as we do all of our MCCPTA meetings, by reaffirming the mission of all PTAs, to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Now, I come to you tonight in support of the superintendent's recommended fiscal year, 2025 operating budget, and its focus on students, classrooms, and schools. We are blessed to be a part of a community that believes in the benefits of a quality education and understands that that comes at a cost. We know that that cost is worth the value it provides to our children and our community at large. We are in an interesting fiscal time, when we find our funding from the federal emergency relief funds coming to an end, our state mandated blueprint expenditures continuing to increase, inflation increasing costs of goods and services, pandemic recovery still in effect, and a real need to provide competitive salaries and benefits for recruiting and retaining a high-quality workforce, all while we must provide a high-quality education for all of our students and an ever-growing diverse student population requiring additional services. We are also in an interesting social and emotional time, when we find our students and our communities dealing with issues of safety and security and health and wellness. The events in the world and Montgomery County have left many feeling unsafe and insecure, and while it is not the main purpose of our schools to protect our children and our communities, it is imperative that our schools ensure our children are safe at school and feel secure so that they are able to learn, which is the main purpose of our schools. There are many issues that our children, teachers, parents, and communities are facing these days, some of which they were facing before the pandemic, and we need to make sure that we continue to work for all schools and communities and keep our efforts broad enough to address as many issues as we can, and we need to work together on them. While it is imperative to continue to address the learning loss that affected many students, it is also imperative that we keep pushing our students, as we did before, to reach for accelerated learning opportunities. We must ensure that the opportunities for reaching higher are available for all of our students. Being a product of MCPS myself, you've heard me say this, I went to Wooten, wha-rah. I've always appreciated the benefits of an MCPS education, which is why my husband and I decided to raise our four children here in Montgomery County and have them all attend MCPS schools. I have been involved with MCCPTA for over 20 years. Someone knew me when I was, you know, a little younger. And I'm very proud that MCCPTA and MCPS are working together to rebuild the trust that we need to support our children. And while it has been tested a little bit, I am an eternal optimist, and I firmly believe that with transparency, accountability, and honesty, we can all work together to do the work needed to support our children, as they are why we are all here. Our communities are asking for help with curriculum, safety, security, health, and wellness, and more. Over these two nights of testimony, you are going to hear from parents and students and our community, from our various clusters and schools, about the needs and issues that are important to their communities. I know that you will all listen and take all of their testimony into consideration as you discuss and vote on the budget. Yes, it is a lot of money, but our kids are worth it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Swain. Please come forward.
Good evening, President Silvestri, Vice President Harris, members of the board, Dr. McKnight. Thanks for the chance to speak on the operating budget for 2425. I'm Jen Sawen, and it's my privilege to serve as a cluster coordinator for the Northwood Cluster. First, thank you for responding to our concerns last year about student safety at Silver Spring International. Adding a third security staff member there made a big difference. This year, no surprise, relocating Northwood High to Old Georgetown Road, what we call North Woodward, for the next three years is front of mind. Thanks again to the Division of Consortium Choice for informing DCC eighth-grade families that we'd be there a third year. They were, Jeannie and Karen were great partners in that. Six years ago, when MCPS was considering options for the holding facility, we had meetings with maps of sites like Adventist and Rocking Horse and questions whether we could repurpose office buildings in downtown Silver Spring. But a core point of the discussion was that whatever site MCPS chose, it had to ensure that students and their families could get there and back, and that's our issue tonight. After MCPS chose the Woodward location, we continued these discussions. It's not easy to get there without a private car. Google says the drive from Northwood or Sims is a quarter to half an hour, 7:00 or 8:00 a.m., but they're very optimistic. The same trip by transit is at least an hour, up to an hour and 45 minutes. It includes one or two bus transfers at a minimum. It may also include walking the last mile. So transportation planning had to be woven into the site selection from the start, and over the next couple of years, we brainstormed with MCPS. Could we collaborate with the county and get supplementing school buses with new ride-on routes? Could we get periodic shuttles from Northwood or Sims? We discussed the need for a morning backup, a sweep bus, if you will. Families need a way to attend school conferences, to stay engaged, and to attend activities. We talked about how younger siblings would be able to access a wellness center for primary care, MC squared students to travel between school and classes at MC, and we are so proud of that signature program with its achievement and the equity. Right now, three-quarters of our students who are going to get their associate's degree before our diploma are black and brown kids. They're our kids. We are really proud of them. So this is a lot. We're going to go from 50% bus riders to 100%. It's like a dozen new routes. We knew it would take effort. We knew it needed a plan, and we know a plan is on the way. It's not here yet. It's not here yet. We remain concerned about what it's going to say. Comes down to basics. Students can't go to school if they can't get to school. That's it. Why do we need a sweep bus? Because a student who misses a bus can't snag a ride with mom or dad if the family has no car. They can't summon Uber or Lyft because those are luxuries our families don't have. A student who overslept may have been up late, working a shift at their paying job till 10:00 or 11:00. They're not playing, you know, chatting on Discord, although they're probably chatting on Discord. But a student who misses the bus misses a whole day of school, and absenteeism is a result none of us can live with. The logistics aren't easy. We know it. Logistics aren't the goal. The goal is doing what's best for the kids, and we've all known for years that transportation was implicit in this site choice. So no surprise, nothing unexpected, plenty of time to put it into the budget. Scheduling bus routes also has implications for equity and for student well-being. Routes at some schools start after six, just after six, and they run for over an hour. Other schools have more routes and later routes, which gives their students more sleep and a shorter ride. At nine MCPS high schools, 90% of the bus routes start after 6:45. Northwood's bus schedule, in contrast, already skews very early. There's no way to push them earlier. Many factors go into this work, of course, but like budgets, schedules reflect our priorities and our values. We need to, simply need to add more buses here. So what else is happening? The bus tracking app should help. We really appreciate the county's, you know, ride-on reimagined study. It can't address the needs for this fall, and we applaud the MCPS initiative to look at overall bus operations. We need to reconsider how to offer jobs that attract and retain drivers, but none of these is going to get the immediate concerns dealt with. Wrapping up, this isn't easy. Transportation is access. Transportation makes or breaks a student's opportunity for academics and for achievement. We understand the costs of implementing 12 new routes and sweep routes to get the kids to school, but we also understand the cost of not implementing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nerissa Johnson.
You're on. You're on, okay. Good evening, Ms. Silvestri, members of the board, and Dr. McKnight. My name is Nerissa Johnson, and in case you don't know who I am yet, I am the cluster coordinator for the Wheaton area and also president of the PTSA at Wheaton High School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this highly sensitive and complicated issue. So I'll keep my comments simple yet broad. Below are my top five priorities for you to consider for the proposed budget. Number one, fully fund all our schools so that each and every school is not only functional and operational, but fully effective. What do I mean by this? For example, an effective school is one where basic services such as the internet actually work. At Wheaton, between the start of the school year and December 8th, we managed to lose the internet about 13% of the time. Now, that has an impact on learning, and that does not make for conducive, positive learning environment, and, you know, that is not an effective school. An effective school also has textbooks and instructional materials available to all who need them. Reading in the budget that some of these items are being cut is very worrisome. This is going to be detrimental to the learning experience for students, and what is the plan for families that want or need access to these materials? An effective school also has equipment that is reasonably up to date and the staff to maintain the equipment. Please work with our staff, especially our ITSS, to make sure that the equipment can be maintained. Priority number two, prioritize funding of staff at the school level. Remember that the number one reason why parents send their children to school is for them to learn. And who does the teaching? Teachers, with assistance from support staff like paras, school psychologists, ITSS staff. You are all very valuable, and we need you. As a parent, I need teachers on the ground and not more managers above them, all right? There's no justification for adding more administrators to an already top-heavy organization. I would also like to request that one full-time staff member be added to the fine arts department to manage all the programs for all of our students. This is a severely overlooked department. Please also ensure that there are teachers for these classes. Fine arts classes are curriculum-based and are included as diploma requirements. Finally, please ensure that schools with specialized staffing needs actually have those positions filled and funded. Loydeman has a performing arts center that can be rented to the public but lacks a school-specific MST. There is expensive equipment within that facility that could potentially be damaged by untrained individuals when the facility is rented out. Give the school and the center the MST that it needs. Priority number three, please fully fund the maintenance budget because it has been ignored for far too long. HVAC units are breaking down in schools across the county, and this has both financial and health-related implications. Loydeman is in dire need of a new HVAC system as their current one is definitely more than 20 years old. Recently, some of these units broke down and were emitting the smell of gas, causing two days of student evacuation fear and confusion. Finally, the maintenance budget has been ignored for far too long, and an analysis of the backlog from four years ago shows that this backlog costs over $500 million. Please fund this line item now. We need our schools to be a safe and functioning space. Point number four, family engagement. It's a priority, and guess what? It doesn't cost much. I'm encouraged to know that no cuts to PCC and PPW positions are being proposed. However, I do know that certain PCCs are being stretched their limits. Be flexible in staffing arrangements. Allow underutilized PCCs to help with family engagement at other schools where demand is greatest. This is a low-to-no-cost move that would make sure that resources are being deployed where and when they're needed the most. Please actually engage families, and to be fair, don't just limit it to Title I families. Families are supposed to have a seat at the table. This is yet another low-cost move for the school system that has tremendous benefits for everyone. The Wheaton Cluster, along with several other clusters in the DCC, receives many new arrivals to the county. I'm concerned that the existing budget does not sufficiently support the schools to enroll these new arrivals. Number five, please include current and accurate information when compiling the budget. Include updated numbers so that it does not lead to a situation of serious inequity. Finally, please consider these other suggestions when determining what to prioritize in the budget. Consider no-cost and low-cost supplements that will bolster current initiatives and be flexible in your planning. Operating budget must be funded to reflect the changing needs and changing demographics of our population. Actually inventory each school to see what they have and ask what they need. And finally, school-based staff are a priority. Please refer to the written version of my testimony for more detailed information. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carolyn Ross. Please come forward. Carolyn Ross. Melissa Stein. Is Melissa Stein here?
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. McKnight, MCVS community, especially the educators that are here. My name is Melissa Stein. I'm the MCCPTA's Special Education Committee Chair, a former MCVS special education teacher, and most importantly, I'm a mother to three children who are receiving special education services across the continuum of services through MCPS. This is a budget hearing. I'm not a numbers person, other than being a bit of a data nerd. Don't worry, I'll follow up with plenty of data after the meeting. Rather than bring up specific line items in my testimony, I've chosen to provide framing questions and thoughts I hope you'll consider while reviewing the superintendent's proposed 2025 budget and the special education staffing plan. To the professionals in the room, I realize that your job is thankless, challenging, and exhausting, and that every day requires a level of grit that I wish you could teach our children. If you can make that happen, this meeting's done, right? We're just going to throw it all at teaching our kids grit. But unfortunately, that's not always how it works. After all, the stated purpose of MCPS is to prepare all students to strive in their future. But what about the mission? Does it really embrace the purpose towards all people thriving? MCVS's mission is every student will have the academic, creative problem-solving, and social-emotional skills to be successful in college and career. That narrow focus on college and career rather than holistic post-secondary success is inconsistent with federal and state special education laws. MCVS is required to provide all students with disabilities, A, I'm going to quote, "free, appropriate public education that helps them learn and prepares them for employment and daily living." Getting into college doesn't matter if you do not have the social and self-management skills like the teacher's grit to thrive. I worry that narrow mission is informing MCPS outcome measures for successful special education in the homeschool model. If meeting state academic standards and showing up to class are metrics of success, you're ignoring so many children whose functional goals are central to their post-secondary success. When you have a backlog of kids in the homeschool model who are either regularly suspended through calls home, documented or undocumented, or working in the admin office all day because there aren't any spaces and programs that can actually serve their needs, whether SESES or Connections or Twice Exceptional for that board kid who chucks desks when she's understimulated, I promise you, that's a thing in my family. A generation of children traumatized by the pandemic are sitting in classrooms that are suddenly upended by one of our children having a meltdown. Every child and staff member is traumatized as the crisis team comes in pulling admin, special ed, and mental health providers away from other students. This is not okay. Many programs outside of homeschool model and resource are LREA, so it's disingenuous to say that this is happening because of the LRE requirements from the state. As things stand, general educators and the vast majority of special educators in the homeschool and resource models are ill-equipped to meet the needs of students with functional goals. While autism training for special education teachers has been a written priority for MCPS Office of Special Education as far back as 2012, the newly offered courses are optional with very little teacher incentive. As a side note, generic special education certification does not include any requirements about autism or significant emotional needs. In the FYI 25 budget, crisis prevention training is a priority. But what does that mean? MCVS needs to be accountable not just for offering trainings, but for teachers actually taking them. The continuum of services, or I'll use the somewhat frowned-upon phrase, continuum of placements, needs to either be expanded or at minimum kept at status quo. There are too many students essentially waiting for the system to catch up with their needs by sending them to an appropriate educational setting where they can receive the necessary services. Why are we shrinking these programs relative to enrollment rather than expanding them? Some increase in money, but not relative to enrollment. Well, it'd be great if we could pass on your grit. We can't. These students need to be explicitly taught these skills, and reducing those placement options opens kids up to trauma. Just want to conclude by highlighting it is an overall MCCPTA priority, widespread crisis prevention training, so we can have less of that crisis team coming in. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Claire Bolick.
Nope, it was on.
Oh, it was. Sorry. All right. Thank you. My name is Claire Bolick. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a parent of two children at Glen Allen Elementary School, and I am also one of two Kennedy cluster coordinators. Thank you for meeting, hearing me tonight and hearing all of what everybody has to say, which I think is, I'm going to be echoing a lot. I understand the needs are great and that not all can be funded. I appreciate you listening as we try to do what we can for all the students at MCPS. This year, the focus on improved school attendance has been positive but slow. As you already know, attendance issues directly relate to the deepest needs within our county. I am grateful for the shifting of funds within the budget to continue the support of increased attendance. In the Kennedy Cluster, the community schools address these needs and fill the gaps for our students and their families. The wraparound services the community schools offer provide support, offer support for good attendance, as well as the well-being of families who are most in need of basic services. The schools in our cluster that are not designated as community schools or Title I continue to need support to improve attendance within the school. Glen Allen is a focused school, and although has smaller class sizes, continues to need support in educating for the importance of school attendance. We've heard a lot tonight about restorative justice and everything, but I also believe that part of what we have to do with elementary school is teach the parents what these things are. So although elementary, the high school and middle schools need these things, so do elementary schools, because they really do not, they come into middle school and they're like, oh, what am I going to do here? And especially around restorative justice, because if a school is not using restorative justice in the way that other schools are, or have a coach, or have stipend staff who volunteer to do that, stipend, they are not able, and they move schools or they shift around, they're not, and then they go to a school that doesn't use that model or hasn't accessed that. It makes it really unsafe, which relates directly to attendance. Today, on the 1A, they talked about this specifically, which I unfortunately didn't hear it, but I went to the website, and there's a Vox article about how attendance relates specifically to safety. And so to make sure, to go on, part of what I want to talk about is, in relation to that, is that we're trying to do as much as we can with what we have. So Glen Allen has reached out to Kennedy High School. I'm not sure when this is going to happen, but to teach, to have a video made for our pep classes, families specifically, about the importance of coming to school. And so I really want to just reiterate, though, that that is like an extra effort that is brought on just because of the emphasis that we need to have more students coming to school. One of our biggest concerns that I will echo is the need for trained staff on the ground, and that relates to paras, general education teachers, and school psychologists. Dr. McKnight spoke at the CCAC meeting in December, and she openly stated what we all know, the need for special education teachers and support staff are not only an MCPS problem, but a nationwide one. We know it is an ask throughout our county schools, which is why we support the efforts that MCPS is doing to recruit teachers and paraeducators and gathering data on why these positions seem to remain empty. The number of students needing special education services increasing yearly and the need for trained staff to handle and involved the work around IEPs and 504 plans increases as well. Requiring teachers for, training for full-time teachers to continue to ease the shortage on how to manage classroom de-escalation and behavior management are also to be able to identify cognitive issues earlier are all necessary. School social workers, thank you for shouting it out. As a social worker, it warms my heart to hear when they are used in the best way possible. I'm impressed that MCPS has a system in place where a social worker can be called in, but I would ask that that app be reevaluated for the more need. And thank you for listening and reading my testimony.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Fitz.
You're on. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. After hearing from the schools in the Quinns Orchard Cluster, I'd like to focus my testimony on addressing a few common needs. On the very most basic level, we need more staff to ensure that bathrooms at middle and high schools remain safe from drugs and violence and also stay consistently and reliably open. Schools in my cluster are experiencing drug use and violence in bathrooms to the extent that students fear using the bathrooms. Parents of middle school and high school students have shared with me that fear of not being able to use a bathroom safely is leading not being able to use a bathroom safely is leading to anxiety and school avoidance. Despite recent experiments with new technology, schools still combat drug use and violence in bathrooms by closing bathrooms. This leads to additional problems and greater student anxiety and avoidance. Menstruating students, as well as students with urinary or GI issues, may not be able to traverse the school looking for the nearest open bathroom without having a dignity-destroying accident. Plus, with closed bathrooms, more students have to wait to use the few remaining facilities. This is also a special needs issue. Students who have bathroom access as part of their IEP or 504 plans may not be able to physically make it to a more distant bathroom when they find the nearest one closed. Students need to go to school knowing they will be able to meet their most basic bodily needs in accessible safety. It is inhumane and cruel not to let students use a bathroom. Okay. This brings me to my next concern from schools in my cluster, the need for more teachers, paraeducators, counselors, security guards, social workers, and substitute teachers. MCPS needs to pay staff well enough to attract and retain workers of all types, and MCPS needs to hire enough staff so they are not quickly overburdened and overwhelmed. A parent from Ridgeview put this best. Our kids need the chance to form bonds with trusted adults. At schools with high staff turnover, poor staff-to-student ratios, and increasingly challenging working conditions, students may not have this chance to form bonds with these trusted figures since there's simply not enough staff members and the staff turns over quickly. Many schools in my cluster have had high staff and teacher turnover. For instance, Fields Road lost its entire slate of 5th grade teachers coming in this year, and it was 21 staff and teachers leaving at a small school one summer. Ridgeview had a period where its entire upper administration was interim. Another common need in my cluster is for more paraeducators, especially at the schools with high special needs, farms, ELS populations, that are not necessarily Title I schools, but still have students with high needs. Teachers need paraeducators in the classroom to help students who are struggling with behavioral issues so that students in need get help and the teacher can focus instruction on the entire class. Too often, parents in my cluster have told me of situations where the behavior of one student prevents an entire class from learning. Special education teachers need enough paraeducators available to meet the often very high needs of their students without undue stress. Elementary schools need enough paraeducators to ensure recess without violence. The schools in my cluster also need dedicated substitute teachers assigned to their schools so that students can form relationships with these substitute teachers and have a sense of consistency in their school days even when a classroom teacher may be absent. I've heard from parents in my cluster that on days where there's a substitute teacher, students act out more in class and often simply leave and wander the hallways. That's a huge problem. We need substitute teachers who know the students. The schools in my cluster also need greater access to counselors, social workers, and restorative justice workers. Students cannot learn when they are in mental distress or feel chronically physically unsafe. We need early interventions in our elementary schools to help students recover from the trauma of the pandemic. Let's skip ahead. Another need we have addressed in my cluster elementary school level is for a free or optional snack. Students cannot learn if they're hungry, and it is simply unfair that not all students have access to food. We need food. Finally, we'd like the county to provide buses as needed to allow students to attend after-hour school events, such as science fairs, work culture nights, and community building events. It's unfair that students without private transportation are excluded from positive events that help engender the type of strong community we are attempting to nurture. In the future, placing ride-on stops walking distance from schools can meet this need, but for now, we need buses. As we know, in the struggle to recover from the pandemic, we need students to really know in their hearts that schools are positive, safe communities where they can form relationships with trusted adults and peers. Oh, I think I did it all the time. There's a little more here, but thank you very much.
I realize we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so at the end of this section, I'll call back the folks that weren't here yet to see if they did arrive after all. But our next speaker is Margaret Maurer. Please come forward.
Good evening, President Silvestri, Superintendent McKnight, and members of the Board of Education. I'm Margaret Maurer, and I represent the parents, teachers, staff, and students of the Whitman Cluster. My co-Cluster coordinators, Sheila Brooke and Eric Delgado, and I appreciate that parents and students are considered crucial partners in this process, and we are grateful for the opportunity to testify this evening. My plan was to get here early enough to hear all of the testimony tonight. Unfortunately, I spent an hour and a half trying to get here, but thankfully, I've read much of the testimony already today, and that testimony echoes everything that I have to say. More classroom teachers, more special education teachers, more paraeducators, more training, more support, more psychologists, more counselors, more social workers, more special education teachers. Again, more special education teachers. For far too long, we've asked our teachers and staff to do more with less. Less staff, less resources, less support, and less time. Our schools have strong teams that support each other and ensure that student and classroom needs are met. Their efforts are not sustainable, and our appreciation is not enough. We said that last year, those same exact words, and yet here we are again, asking for help, more help, the same help. We agree with Superintendent McKnight that our recovery from the pandemic is not even near the finish line. We're making positive strides in recovering learning losses and addressing our student well-being, but this is not the time to pause. We must push forward in support of our core purpose, preparing all students to thrive in their future. And we believe that MCPS cannot meet those core objectives without investing in our staff and in our students. Our teachers need time and access for professional learning, instructional coaching, planning time, and then adequate substitute staffing so that they can develop and realize the lesson plans that their students need. If teachers, administrators, paraeducators, and staff do not have the time and resources they need to be successful, how can our students be successful? Our schools continue to struggle with sufficient staffing. Staff support is minimal, especially in non-focus schools. All classroom staff serve as de facto classroom substitutes. This means admin staff, principals, paraeducators, reading specialists, staff development teachers, and specials teachers are plugged into classrooms at any moment. You remember the scene in Ice Age where Scrap is hanging onto the side of a glacier, balancing an acorn on his nose with his fingers and toes trying to plug all the leaks? That's what I imagine our principals do every single day, trying to plug in all the gaps but keeping that acorn on their nose. As I said, we need more special education teachers and paraeducator staff to alleviate the heavy caseloads and support co-taught instruction. We need more support staff in managing the development, implementation, and monitoring of 504 plans. We appreciate Dr. McKnight's request for one 504 coordinator position, but we don't consider that adequate. As the number of 504 plans increase in each of our schools, as they are across the county, it's incomprehensible that one coordinator will remotely meet the needs of 211 schools. Without proper support in our schools and in central office, our student staff cannot be prepared to do the essential work of teaching and learning. This year, as well as last year, our cluster schools share that student self-regulation continues to be an issue and requires considerable time and resources. We know it's just not our cluster. Since September, there's been a rise in bomb threats, as well as hate and bias incidents across the county. Moreover, chronic absenteeism, suspensions, and bullying are among the behavioral concerns that schools have been trying to address. These all point to the increased need for mental health, expanded mental health supports, and our students need to feel safe and secure in their school environment. Oh, all right, 30 seconds. Anyways, with the Esser Cliff looming large, we urge you to fully fund critical service and support positions like school psychologist, parent-community coordinator, social workers, and the bare minimum of one 504 coordinator. We feel that these positions are essential to meeting the needs of every MCPS student. Ooh, I have nine seconds. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Emily Beckman. Please come forward.
It was already on, sorry. My name is Emily Beckman. I'm happy to testify on behalf of the Walter Johnson Cluster. Thank you, Dr. McKnight, and the board for giving us this opportunity. The Walter Johnson Cluster fully supports full funding of the superintendent's proposed budget, both here in front of the Board of Education, but perhaps somewhat more significantly in front of the county council, who holds the purse strings we absolutely intend and expect and hope everyone else here will also be testifying before the county council in support of this budget and in support of all of the needs of our schools and of our children. Being able to meet students' needs ultimately comes down to staffing, having enough adults in the building to cover absences, handle emergencies, and provide the instruction, connection, and guidance that each student needs. The board has already heard tonight many of the concerns of parents throughout the county, which I echo and know that our parents, students, and teachers also feel and are concerned about. I'd like to simply highlight two more specific asks from the Walter Johnson Cluster. We are asking that the superintendent and the board consider an additional school security staff position for Walter Johnson High School and for Tilden Middle School. We don't see this in any way as counter or separate from the important needs for mental health services, for mental health professionals, for restorative justice, and all of those kinds of services, but recognize the fact that when school security staffing is insufficient to monitor large schools, sprawling campuses, outdoor areas that are in use throughout the day because of the existence of portable classrooms and students' needs to exit the building in order to go to class, inevitably, other adults in the building get pulled in to do these tasks. It takes administrators away from their important duties. It takes counselors away from their important duties. Our other adults in the building have very important roles to be playing, supporting our students, and when the security staffing is insufficient, they are pulled out of their ideal roles and into that monitoring role as well. Walter Johnson's current enrollment as of the CIP in September was 2,987 students with the additional, that's in a school that has an official capacity of approximately 2,300. So it is over 600 students over capacity. There are many portable classrooms. That is a situation that will now extend through the 2026-2020 school year as the Woodward Project timeline is elongated. We're looking at another year of that level of overcrowding at Walter Johnson High School. Walter Johnson has only six security guard or security staff allocations. That's the same number of school security guards as McGruder High School, which has a student population of 1,616 students. There are five other high schools in Montgomery County with lower student populations than Walter Johnson that have seven to eight security staff allocations, so we would ask the board to consider that. In addition, with respect to Tilden Middle School, Tilden physically shares a building with Rock Terrace, which leads to additional security concerns and greater need for coordination. During this school year alone, multiple false fire alarms from both of the schools have forced unnecessary halts to learning. Any security issues arising within one of the schools directly affects the other, interrupting the instructional day of both schools. In addition, global events have led to multiple security concerns specifically at Tilden. These include a verbal conflict around a protester that was outside of the school one morning when students were coming into the building, as well as verbal and online threats made towards staff members and administration that led to significant concerns on their part about their safety in the school. So we would ask the court, I'm sorry, I'm a lawyer. I knew I was going to do that. I'm one of those in-court lawyers, so I'm used to saying the court. The board, we would ask the board to consider those two specific requests, as well as all of the other very important advocacy we've heard here today, and we are absolutely committed to testifying before the county council and to advocating for and fighting on behalf of MCPS and all of our students for the funding we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Minnie Vargas and Teddy Wu. Please play the, please come forward, and I think there's a video as well. Video first?
My name is Minnie Vargas. I'm a member of the MCCPTA Curriculum Committee, but I'm submitting this testimony as the parent of a middle schooler. Please fund a study to determine how MCPS can implement later bell times for our teens, consistent with the recommendations of nearly every medical group in this country. Decades of research demonstrate the negative impact of bell times earlier than 8:30 a.m. on teens. The science isn't new. It's just more critical to follow now than ever in the wake of our learning loss and other problems associated with sleep deprivation. Teens are biologically programmed to fall asleep later, when their levels of melatonin rise, which typically occurs around 11 p.m. However, they still need eight to 10 hours of sleep to support higher-level brain function, which occurs towards the end of their sleep cycles. We really need later bell times for teens. Please fund the study. Due to my participation in the MCCPTA Curriculum Committee, I'm also requesting that you please hire a curriculum specialist to create content for every grade and subject. Creating curricula is a full-fledged field in itself, and the task should not be delegated to individual teachers who have more than enough to do. The county spent a tremendous amount of money to purchase instructional materials and then stopped without creating curriculums. Support the teachers instead of overwhelming them. Same thing for math. We need preset supplemental math packets that can be sent home for every grade level. The higher math courses need workbooks. Why aren't there books? If there were books or workbooks, the teachers wouldn't have to spend valuable instructional time printing and photocopying. Even worse, why isn't there a math specialist at every school? Math is an essential foundation, and we need to support it. Thank you for your.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. McKnight, and senior members of the MCPS leadership. My name is Teddy Wu. I'm one of the cluster coordinators from Clarksburg. I'm also the PTSA president for Holly Wells, and I have two daughters in 8th and 6th grade in that school. I have three topics I just want to bring to your attention. The first one is the mental health of students at all levels, more specifically to make sure middle and high schools have an assigned school psychologist. Although cases are currently handled by a rotating group of psychologists, an assigned one will be able to better assist the staff at the schools to work with the teams that are existently there, the counselors and social workers. They have familiarity with the students there, and when issues come up, they can, they're better equipped to deal with it. Also, it does cut down on the rotating around and being late to meetings and because they're caught up in other issues at other schools. This provides the consistency that I was talking about when problems come at schools. I understand right now it's 26 out of the 45 middle school, high schools are currently funded. Please see if there is a possibility to fund more psychologists at those, at the high school and middle school level. I'm also involved in the MCCPTA Curriculum Committee, and my focus is on technology subjects. So it's been my observation, sitting in all those meetings with both MCPS staff and also other members, that one, MCPS is really good at creating one-off opportunities throughout the county, but it cannot deliver it to all the schools because of the limited number of staff trained or certified to teach the technology. I asked the board to try to find the funding to hire staff needed to teach this technology in all the schools from high school to elementary school. That's the only way that you can get the curriculum out there. You can have great curriculum there, but if you don't have the people to deliver it, it's just on paper. Digital content in classrooms. As we see in the budget, there's a lot emphasis of using digital technology and software. We need to ensure educational outcomes for each class, learning objectives is achieved regardless how it's delivered. I believe that we have a good understanding of the traditional textbooks and paper method, but when it comes but when it comes to using digital content on a Chromebook, many parents and teachers still have reservations. We need to make sure through assessment that the content is delivered to the student, and when it's not, remedies are made to ensure content is acquired by the student. So if there needs to go back, revisit, that needs to be done, even though we delivering it on different media or different ways of delivering that knowledge. Let's see, we need to, we need to follow the evidence-based best practice for using this kind of digital content in the classroom and review how the time is spent on screens and have good, relating to good outcomes. One more thing that I just added here as I was listening to all this is substitute teachers. We really need to focus on that. My older daughter had three substitute teachers, long-term substitutes and rotating long-term substitutes, and that has been very disruptive, and I'm sure that is not just my, my child, but there are many parents out there experiencing that. Things don't get put into grade books because they don't have access, they get substitutes that may not show one time, and then one, there's two classes where my daughter said every just, in the middle school, just wandered out to the hallway and got caught by other people. One, teachers say, why are you wandering the hallways? And that's just not acceptable. There's precious time already in the classroom, and if there's no instructor or substitute that is knowledgeable on the subject in that classroom, it becomes a big waste of the times, and that's how the students perceive it, and they don't take the subject seriously. That's all I have for you. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Haley Clemmer, and it's an audio testimony.
Good evening, Board Presidents, Celestry, Board Members, and MCPS Staff. I am Haley Clemmer, one of the MCCPTA Seneca Valley Cluster Coordinators and a parent to an MCPS student. Thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding the operating budget. I am beginning my testimony to shed light on the importance of tutoring within our schools. In our diverse and dynamic community, students possess unique learning needs. Tutoring serves as a personalized avenue, providing targeted assistance to students with support and enrichment. Removing tutoring ser, services has created a larger void between students and is undoubtedly an equity concern. I implore you to prioritize putting resources to exploring and implementing effective, high-impact tutoring for students. Secondly, in continuation of recognizing that each student is unique, I request that more resources be allocated to support special education, ESOL, FARMs, and gifted education programming. These programs contribute significantly to the diversity and inclusivity of educational pursuits. Third, I want to draw attention to increasing opportunities for professional development. Staff within our schools are educators, mentors, mediators, and pillars of student support. Witnessing the larger classroom ratios and decreasing pool of substitute teachers significantly threatens the quality of education we provide. Support to our educators in the form of professional development opportunities is a strategic investment in the quality of MCPS educators, as well as improving satisfaction and retention. Four, funding is needed to hire and retain substitute teachers. This is a continuity of education concern. In a first-grade class, the ratio is 1 to 27. This was supposed to be offset with breakout classes for math and literacy to bring the ratios down to 1 to 19. However, with teachers being absent, as life happens, the class had over two weeks with continuing instruction at 1 to 27 ratio. MCPS has tried to decrease class sizes for math and literacy, but the absence of substitutes makes this effort null and void. This story is not unique to one school. It happens across the district, with assistant principals and principals assisting with covering these openings, which takes them away from administrative and leadership duties. Fifth, preserving assistant principal positions in elementary schools. Each assistant principal plays an important role in maintaining a positive school culture and supporting staff. Assistant principals ensure continuity of operations and creates a sense of stability. A recent incident involving a safety concern that had to be addressed at the administrative level sheds light on how invaluable assistant principals are in the elementary schools. The assistant principal promptly addressed parents' concerns in the principal's absence, preventing a delaying resolution and allowing the family to have a peace of mind. The assistant principals play a vital role in immediate problem solving and effective communication. Six, the fine arts department has been historically underfunded, particularly in instrument purchases and repairs. In communities with higher farms rates, there are additional barriers to purchasing and repairing instruments, making this an equity issue. The current budget falls short of recognizing the human resources it takes to run these programs. The addition of, of a staff member at 1 FTE is a pressing need for K through 12. There are six content areas with art, music, dance course, theater, and specialized courses in photography and ceramics. These classes are curriculum-based and are included in diploma requirements. Additional staff will provide the opportunity for more entry-level programming, enabling students to break into fine arts activities. These only promise to snowball to be a larger issue in the future if we do not remedy this situation, where activities such as marching bands, orchestras, jazz bands will cease to be. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you on resolving these issues.
Thank you. If we could have Carolyn Ross, if you're here, please come forward.
My name is Carolyn Ross. I am here from the Einstein Cluster. We would like to focus the Board tonight on two important topics that, it seems, all of my fellow parent advocates have brought up, staffing and curriculum. First, our cluster supports both a countywide and school visual and performing arts high school academy, which attracts many students. We have one instrumental music teacher, a dynamo, one dance teacher, very new to our school, one theater arts teacher, who's been there for a long time, but who also doubles as a choral arts teacher. We advocate for increasing fine arts instructional staff at academy schools like Einstein and couple that with a request for at least one additional MCPS central staff member to manage the six content areas across grades K through 12, now covered by just three individuals. We remind the Board and MCPS, as your last speaker did, fine arts are not extracurricular. As part of the graduation requirements, fine arts deserve the same level of support as other academic areas. We applaud the proposed budget increase for musical instrument purchases and repairs and ask that it not be decreased or removed as the budget process continues. Next, we support our advocacy priority for staff retention and recruitment, and once again, implore the Board to urgently address pervasive instructional staff shortages in all disciplines. At Rockview Elementary School, the lack of leadership from a permanent principal has had far-reaching effects. Einstein experienced significant losses to the math, computer technology, and special education departments, from which we are still reeling. Staffing impacts everything, as you've heard from our fellow parent advocates tonight, from workforce morale and equity to quality of education and breadth of course offerings. Imagine, at a school named for one of the most preeminent scientists in history, we have no AP physics class, no AP biology or chemistry either. We value the International Baccalaureate Program in Einstein, which is available to students without application, but this curriculum is daunting, and as far as we can tell, requires a two-year commitment in a student's school year schedule to take one advanced-level science course. It is at the, the staffing is, is being moved to the IB program, and students are now, face a barrier when they seek access to the now MCPS subsidized AP exams. Across the cluster, we have many long-term subs, some who are content-qualified, some who aren't, and we're told recruitment by MCPS ceases when a long-term sub occupies a full-time slot. MCPS must communicate a robust plan and instigate a public campaign for human capital retention and recruitment for both instructional and non-instructional staff. Steps must be taken now to effectively collaborate with the teachers' union, as Member Evans has previously endorsed. Develop new strategies and generously fund others like competitive salary incentives and the Grow Your Own program. MCPS must reduce applicant prescreening time and reasonably relax some standards at a time of unprecedented challenges to better serve our communities. Principals must demonstrate flexibility, and instructional staff must be sourced by MCPS on a system-wide basis and placed in schools where they are needed upon hire with no promise that they will stay at the assigned school. Curriculum. We support the MCCPTA Curriculum Committee's recommendations to fund curriculum improvements based on the benefit of high-quality externally-provided curriculum and materials. You heard from Ms. Vargis regarding a curriculum coordinator, we support that. The current process whereby MCPS develops in-house curriculum with reliance on teacher work samples is simply untenable across all disciplines, grade levels, and learning needs, particularly those of emerging multilingual learners, which our cluster deals with in large numbers. We must do better by all our students by conducting meaningful evaluation of different approaches and programs, including the Two Way Immersion Program, which affects Oakland Terrace Elementary School and, starting next year, Newport Middle. And graduation requirements, big discussion topic. Before adding any graduation requirements, such as the proposed finance course, MCPS must assess its curriculum for all graduation requirements for benefit engagement of students and not just to meet Maryland Blueprint status. Students tell us computer technology requirement focuses on coding and robotics, which offers no practical benefit, for example, instruction in the use of spreadsheets or other applications of broader interest and relevance to higher education and career goals among all students. Both middle and high school students have expressed disappointment in the health curriculum described, again, is not relevant to them and painfully repetitive throughout the grade levels. The doubling of the credit requirement has students clamoring for a finite number of seats in summer or school year online courses simply to get it out of the way, but failing to derive any benefit from cramming the material in between summer obligations or on top of their already-long school days. Similarly, the doubling of the physical education requirement is questionable and onerous as to its benefits. Excuse me. The, the mission statement that MCPS has is eerily similar for physical education to its, its health mission or health education mission. We would ask that, we would ask that MCPS fund a study regarding the possibility of a wellness, a comprehensive wellness curriculum, which can serve to meet the physical and, physical education and health.
Thank you. Board members, if you have any questions or comments, please turn your lights on. No? Okay. We will continue with our next speaker. That's Melissa McKenna. Please come forward.
My name is Melissa McKenna. It's good to be here this evening, be anywhere at all. Different kind of testimony today. It's time to end the Innovative School Calendar Program at Roscoe-Nix and Arcola Elementary Schools now, not in 2025, but by August 2024. For the high cost, estimated around $6 million, student outcomes for the ISC program have not met any metric of success educators or families hoped for. The August 2023 MCCPS Office of Shared Accountability Report states, and I quote, "Despite an additional 28 days of instruction, no statistically significant differences were evident between ISC and comparison students in mathematics or reading scores in spring 2023. Furthermore, no statistically significant differences were detectable between ISC and comparison students during any assessment period." A December 21 report highlighted fall 21 math and literacy scores for Arcola's Latino fifth graders receiving FARMs. The so-called significantly higher six-point improvement appeared enormous on the PowerPoint on screen versus a decidedly unimpressive half-inch space separating downward trending lines on paper. In these tight fiscal times, the ISC program should be eliminated before these schools lose any more dedicated staff. The simple truth is, the ISC provides no discernible academic benefit. Challenges the ISC program fails to address or even consider. Teachers need more planning time, and staff burnout is a major issue. Extremely high mobility rates at these schools, over 38% for Nix, over 30% at Arcola. Unusually high summer absenteeism over several weeks. At Nix, over 20%, at Arcola, over 23%. Lack of continuity from Roscoe-Nix Elementary, grades pre-K through 2, to its paired 3 through 5 school, Crest Haven Elementary. Two key impacting factors outside MCPS control, mobility rates and summer attendance, are absent from MCPS reports. So are the non-MCPS programs available to Arcola's students, Linkages and Gator Programs. Third-grade reading proficiency, which MCPS deems as the key to academic success, is completely absent because it's impossible to calculate when students go from Nix to Crest Haven, a non-ISC school for third grade. There is a better option, since none of the aforementioned things make sense. Return to the success of the ELO sale program, supported by educators and families for Roscoe and Nix. Our kids only get one shot. Please do the right thing, end the ISC program now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joshua Rubin. Please come forward.
I'm here today to inform you about the continuing problems with our HVAC system and ask you to please move the Loederman HVAC update to the 2025 fiscal year. As you heard from two of our students earlier this evening, we had two consecutive days of evacuation due to a gas smell during the week after Thanksgiving. Despite efforts to address broader HVAC issues, we continue to encounter inadequately heated classrooms, even with the use of space heaters. Today, between 10:45 and 11:00 a.m., I took an air temperature thermometer and measured 15 classrooms at random. One-third of those classrooms were below the minimum allowable classroom temperature set by MSDE. That temperature is 65 degrees. One classroom measured 57.7. The gym measured 58.6. One staff bathroom, 47.8. Furthermore, I wish to highlight the spikes in total volatile organic compounds, or TVOC levels, since staff began monitoring the publicly available data in December. I do have a handout, which I created along with colleague Melissa Che, with a regrettably limited amount of data. I can't provide more detailed information, as despite numerous requests as school staff and through MCEA, MCPS has not supplied us with the classroom-by-classroom air quality data we've been seeking since early December. This lack of transparency leaves us concerned about potential exposure to high toxin levels for both students and teachers. Obviously, we're frustrated with the lack of transparency, but we, staff and students, are tired of working in the cold. We're tired of working in rooms that might have high levels of toxins. Please move the Loederman Middle School HVAC update to fiscal year 2025 budget so that we can get our updated system as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Giselle Saire Ramos. Please come forward.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Gisela Saire, madre de dos niños que asisten a la escuela primaria e intermedia. Hoy estoy aquí para expresar mi preocupación y pedir a la, pedir la creación de programas de alerta, de alerta temprana y aprendizaje que permitan tomar acción y dar el soporte académico necesario a los estudiantes aprendiendo el inglés dentro de la MCPS. Es importante mencionar el crecimiento de la población latina en la MCPS. Según estadísticas, la población estudiantilatina ha aumentado en los últimos años, y es desalentador observar que su rendimiento académico no refleja este crecimiento. Para citar un ejemplo, las estadísticas muestran que para, para la primavera del 2023, solo 34% de los estudiantes latinos de tercer grado estaban leyendo a nivel, la cifra más baja de toda la porción demográfica. Como madre latina que emigró a los Estados Unidos hace cuatro años sin conocimiento del idioma inglés, me di cuenta de los obstáculos que enfrentaría mi familia al navegar por el sistema escolar. Uno de los más importantes fue la falta de información disponible para apoyar a los, a los estudiantes, particularmente aquellos como el mío, que tenían dificultades en literatura. Mis hijos estaban lidiando con la barrera del idioma, y sin la ayuda adecuada, su progreso académico se vio obstaculizado. académico se vio obstaculizado. En mi búsqueda por cerrar esta brecha, me sentí empoderada para preguntar por recursos adicionales en la escuela, como reuniones con los consejeros, seguimiento a los resultados académicos diariamente, llamadas telefónicas y correos electrónicos con los maestros. La transformación en la trayectoria académica de mis hijos fue notable. Con el apoyo de los programas como ISOL, todo lo anteriormente mencionado y las habilidades que adquirí involucrándome con el sistema educativo, mis hijos no solo se pusieron al día de sus compañeros, sino que sobresalieron y llegaron a ocupar cuadro de honor en el colegio. Pero, ¿qué pasa con las familias que no tienen el tiempo suficiente para hacer esta clase de seguimientos? ¿Deben esperar hasta sus hijos se atrasen o falle? ¿Muestren resultados involuntarios? No solo los padres y los maestros, consejeros, y estudiantes que permitan el proceso académico de los niños. Nuestra historia y éxito destaca la importancia de invertir en programas que brinden recursos y apoyo a los estudiantes que enfrentan diariamente la educación. Tanto los latinos y afroamericanos tenemos que estar unidos para hacer el cambio. Gracias.
My name is Gisela Sayre, a mother of two children who attend elementary and middle school. Today, I'm here to express my concern and call for the creation of an early warning system for reading that would alter MCPS teachers, that would alert MCPS teachers and parents of when English learners need to be given additional academic support. I would like to draw attention to the growing population of Latino students with MCPS. According to statistics, the Latino student population has increased significantly in recent years. However, it is disheartening to note that their academic performance does not reflect this growth. To cite one example, statistics show that by spring 2023, only 34% of Latino third-grade students were reading on grade level, the lowest outcomes of any other demographic group. As a Latina mom who immigrated to the U.S. four years ago, my journey has been filled with challenges and triumphs. Arriving in a new country with no knowledge of the English language, I realized the obstacles my family could face in navigating the school system. One of the most important was the lack of information available to support students, particularly those like mine who were struggling in reading. My kids were dealing with the language barrier, and without the right help, their academic progress was hindered. In my quest to bridge this gap, I felt empowered to ask for additional resources within the school to support my children. This included meetings with counselors, tracking academic results daily, phone calls, and emails with teachers. The transformation in my children's academic trajectory was nothing short of remarkable. With the support of programs like ISOL and my constant follow-up, including the skills I gained by getting involved with the education system, my children not only caught up with their peers, but excelled to the point of earning a spot on the honor roll. But what about families who don't have enough time to do this kind of follow-ups? Should they wait until their children fall behind or fail? Why not work on creating early warning systems that involve not only parents but teachers, counselors, and students to enable children's academic progress? Our success story highlights the importance of investing in programs that provide resources and support to students facing educational disparities. All children deserve the opportunity to thrive academically regardless of their background or language barriers. We must remain African-Americans and Latinos united to make change. Thank you.
Thank you for that interpretation of Ms. Sayre Ramos's testimony. We'll now move on to Carleen Butt-Pruitt. Please come forward.
Thank you, members of the Board of Education, Dr. McKnight, and MCPS management staff, for allowing myself and others to come and share with you the impacts that this budget, proposed budget, is going to have on our students, our staff, and our families. My name's Carleen Butt-Pruitt, and I'm the proud SEIU Executive Vice President and Support Staff Member for the last 25 years in MCPS. Several of the proposed decisions in the budget will have a lasting negative impact on support professionals. In the recent community budget discussions, MCPS leadership shared that the educational assistance, our paraeducators, are one of the four supports provided to students in classrooms with the greatest need. To my dismay, I learned that the proposed budget would cut the funds in half that were dedicated to this new paraeducator orientation, that there are no plans to train paraeducators alongside teachers, that the two positions dedicated to the Career Pathways Program, which helps our over 9,500 support professionals navigate their career and grow within MCPS, were cut, and that there are no additional positions allocated for our school's main offices. Over the past two years, SEIU board members have asked that the main offices in our schools be staffed to meet the current needs of our students, our staff, and our families. In FY '23, 44.5% of the 211 school administrative secretary positions were advertised. The school administrative secretary position is unmanageable for one person at the elementary level, and at the secondary level, our staff are being impacted by the comprehensive needs of stakeholders and the implementation of new initiatives. SEIU has been raising this issue to the board, and we were encouraged to address the issue in contract negotiations, which we did. In negotiations, we learned that we could not allocate positions. Thankfully, a member of the MCPS management advocated for reclassification study of the school admin secretary position, which addresses work level, but it doesn't address workload. Please act now before we lose more dedicated and trained staff and increase clerical positions in our school's main offices. In FY '23, 8.5% of support professionals were 29 years or younger. 25.8% were 60 years or older. The Career Pathways Program needs to grow as agreed in negotiations and stated in the contract, as it will help build a stable and skilled workforce that is self-renewing. This will ultimately benefit the system, the employees, and the students. Please consider the additional 13.5% dollars proposed in this budget for contractual services and reallocate funds to fund the new educator orientation, the two positions in Career Pathways Program, the creation of additional positions, and our main offices. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sanjata Summa. Please come forward. Our next speaker is Fernando Moreno. Please come forward.
I am the school counselor at Montgomery Knolls, and I have been working 29 years. And I appreciate how all of you have to make tough decisions to make priorities. But for many years, I have testified and advocated for school counselors. Today, I'm going to be very specific, and in a budget who is so big, being very specific sometimes loses attention. I'm thinking only about five of four specialists. It's my understanding that we have proposed to cut too critical for my thinking of five of four specialists. We have around 9,000 students who have five fours, and we have only four people, and from those four people, two of them have been cut in the budget. For me, as a counselor, and many of my colleagues are going to talk about other priorities, you think, what is that had to be done for the school counseling? But helping from central office staff to deal with these legal issues helps individual students to reach to their full potential, to have accommodations. For me, I have my testimony. I'm not going to read all of that. I only give you from the bottom of my heart. I have a situation this year with an student who was a pre-kindler for an international office, pre-kindler, who has a difficult situation thanks to the support of two critical people in central office, Shannon Farmer, the coordinator, and Rebecca Wills. We were able to provide that service, and this student is now really enjoying learning specifically. Now, I know how to increase social emotional needs in the students. Sometimes, we are not trained with these legal things, and I think it's critical for us and have priorities to help us at the school level. Now, I can talk about many other priorities that the school's counselors needs, and I'm not going to have nearly the time, but it's important for me to think about these small details. I call it domino effect. You think, ah, it's only one position we are saving, but the critical domino effect become very, in my understanding, not necessarily in my work, but the student needs are not fulfilled. Thank you very much, and hope you can do the right decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Heather Harmon. Please come forward.
Members of the Board and Dr. McKnight, I stand before you today to vehemently argue against the proposed cut to the Career Pathways Program in the FY '25 budget. Currently, we have 211 staff developers for 12,000 teachers, a ratio crucial for the continuous improvement and professional development of our educators. The number of workforce developers for over 9,000 support staff is two, sorry, was two. Those positions have been cut. This is not just a reduction in numbers. It is a direct hit to the resources and support that our support staff desperately need and regrettably demonstrates an inequity of the resources support employees can access when compared to teachers and other certificated staff. Our support staff are the backbone of our educational system, and the Career Pathways Program has been a lifeline for their professional growth and career development. Cutting this program would result in a direct impact on future career growth for our employees, and as a result, will have a negative impact on student success. Slashing this program sends a disheartening message. MCPS is willing to compromise the quality of education in our community. Education is not just about what happens in the classrooms. It's about investing in the people who shape the minds of future generations. The Career Pathways Program plays a critical role in ensuring that our support staff have access to the necessary resources and support for continuous learning and professional development, and plays a key role in the support-to-teacher pipeline. Moreover, the proposed cut has far-reaching consequences for our local community. A staggering 81% of SEIU employees live right here in Montgomery County. These are our neighbors, friends, and community members. The Career Pathways Program is not just a line item in the budget. It's an investment in the future of our organization and our students. In recent board meetings, you have asked if the program is being cut, and MCPS has told you the program is not being cut, but that is only half true. The two Career Pathways positions, the people who wake up every day to support staff and run the program with fidelity, have been cut from the FY '25 budget. This will mean that MCPS will reassign portions of this work to existing staff to the extent possible. As a result, there will be a scarcity of dedicated career development resources for supporting services employees. I urge decision-makers to reconsider the proposed cut, recognizing that our support staff are the unsung heroes and essential workers of our school system. Cutting the Career Pathways Program sends a message to staff that they are not worth the investment. On behalf of all support staff, we ask that these two positions be reinstated so we can keep our momentum going and don't undo the great work this board supported two years ago. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christina McCann. Please come forward.
Good evening, Dr. McKnight and board members. My name is Christina McCann. I use they/them pronouns, and I'm an alumnus of Montgomery Blair High School, as well as a former TPT paraeducator at Parkland Magnet Middle School. I'm here representing MCPS for Palestine, a coalition of alumni and community members. In December, we published an open letter, which now has over 1,000 signatures. You can read the full letter and sign on at mcpsthe number for palestine.com and follow us on Instagram at mcpstforpalestine. Here's an excerpt from our open letter. Dear MCPS community, we, a diverse, multi-ethnic, and multi-faith coalition of alumni from Montgomery County Public Schools, make clear our solidarity with the Palestinian people and their struggle for justice and liberation as Israel's genocidal, U.S.-backed assault on Palestinians in Gaza enters its third, now fourth, month. We call on current and former students, staff, faculty, parents, and residents of Montgomery County to sign on to this open letter and join us in organizing around the following demands. One, we demand MCPS end all anti-Palestinian repression, intimidation, and retaliation. We call on MCPS to immediately reinstate all staff placed on administrative leave for their support of Palestinian human rights and justice. We also call on MCPS to issue a system-wide policy that equally protects all student and staff, First Right Amendment, to free speech, to dissent against injustice, and to demonstrate. Two, we demand MCPS formally reject all anti-Palestinian narratives and racism in its curricula and teacher trainings. We demand MCPS end collaboration with the Anti-Defamation League and other anti-Palestinian organizations, and provide staff trainings that do not harmfully conflate anti-Zionism and antisemitism. Parseho is an organization that provides curriculum training on antisemitism, quote, "grounded in a commitment to justice for all people." Three, we demand MCPS educators provide accurate, unbiased lessons about the history of Palestine, the Nakba, and the 75-year Israeli occupation. We are sharing the following resources available on our website for MCPS educators: Teach Palestine, Teaching for Change, Abolitionist Teaching Network, and Parseho. Four, we demand elected officials at every level of government, from local to state to federal, call for a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Gaza and end to all U.S. aid to Israel. We call on community members to do more than simply sign this letter. This letter is a tool to organize and educate our classmates, open conversations with teachers and family members, and show solidarity with Palestinians around the world. Palestine is here in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vicki Brown. Please come forward.
Hello, Dr. McKnight, members of the Board of Education. My name is Vicki Brown, and I'm an educational interpreter for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program from Montgomery County Public Schools. As an MCPS employee and a SEIU Local 500 member, I am deeply concerned about the cuts to vital programs that impact our students, my colleagues, our members, and the work that we do. MCPS's investment in staff growth and development are also an investment in our students. Our educational support professionals deserve to be valued, and the proposed budget cuts to integral training for staff is not a step in the right direction. Now is not the time to divest from staff. Now is the time to invest in our members. Now is the time to continue the professional training that allows them to grow and progress on their career pathways at MCPS. The MCPS Grow Your Own initiatives create well-rounded, capable, and ambitious individuals ready to excel in the MCPS workforce. The Career Pathways Program is an integral part of growing our own. This program supports SEIU Local 500 members to identify career opportunities and goals and to obtain the education and training to achieve those career goals. This program supports a diverse and talented workforce. Every member has access to the career development tools needed for their specific career pathways goal. Career pathways successes and the impact of the program reaches far and wide. This program was established eight years ago and is continuing to grow. Why are we allowing MCPS to cut a program that is successful? Why aren't we supporting the growth and additional funding of this program instead of considering cuts? MCPS's webpage states, "Join the MCPS team and be the change. Work for MCPS." It's high time we held them accountable to those words. Be the change and continue to support the Career Pathways Program that is dedicated to helping others achieve success. The potential cuts to this program must not happen. The significance of the Career Pathways Program cannot be overstated. It has been upheld as a national model for school systems to emulate. What message do we send when cutting one of our most What message do we send when cutting one of our most successful programs becomes a priority? While we are here discussing potential budget cuts to integral programs for MCPS support professionals, it would be remiss to not bring up the topic of MCPS continuing to outsource our jobs. From paraeducators, building service workers, sign language interpreters, and cue speech translators, contractors are hired to fill vacancies that should be permanent union jobs. The high turnover rate to many of these positions can be directly tied to understaffing, overworking, and being underpaid. I would instead ask that these shortcomings be addressed by an increase in the rate of pay for these positions, making MCPS a destination workplace. The amount of money that is paid to these contractors and agencies is more than double the amount paid to MCPS's own dedicated employees. If we are looking at budget cuts, why aren't we looking at ways to cut the outsourcing that MCPS is currently practicing? The money that could be saved by MCPS would allow for an increase in pay in these and other integral positions. It would free up budget line items to fill voids in essential staff. Let's make MCPS the destination workplace it once was and can be again. Stop outsourcing our jobs to contractors and agencies and invest in your dedicated and committed support professionals. Our students deserve it.
Did Sujata Summa join us? No? Okay. Board members, if you have any comments or questions, please turn your lights on. Our next speaker is Henrietta Jenkins. Turn your mic on underneath the...
My name is Henrietta Jenkins and I work as a technical help desk specialist. I serve educators and staff at MCPS. I'm here today to stand with my union brothers and sisters in demanding a stop to harmful budget cuts. While MCPS is not an underfunded school system, it is one with misguided priorities. We are often told about the stellar delivery of services educational supports that provide, and yet, this budget diverts from those very staff members who make MCPS a top-tier school system. The cutting of funding and staff from Career Pathways Program is harmful to the future of many here at MCPS. It is this program that has allowed many of my colleagues to develop skills necessary to transition from entry-level jobs to the specialized talent our school system requires. Cutting training budgets while we have hundreds of staffing vacancies and even more staff turnover makes a problem where it cannot, where it should not be one. During the recent contract negotiations, it was discussed at length that retaining employees is a priority of MCPS. Yet, these budget reductions do not match their words. Professional development for staff has a direct impact on student outcome. Students do better when they have consistency among those serving them, including educational support staff. While we are elated that the salary increases in our collective bargaining agreement will be funded, the alarming cuts to staff development and training will cost Montgomery County Public Schools far more than a few pennies sir, few pennies saved, sorry. Professional development for new and veteran staff alike is not optional but necessary for the effectiveness and efficiency of roles that they have provided in our schools with our students. Students are the ones that lose when staff are not effectively trained. MCPS is one that loses when frustrated staff leave us because of a lack of communication, collaboration, respect, and appropriate professional development. Our staff and our students deserve better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Camelia Barrillas. Please come forward.
My name is Camilla Barrillas and I am a 7th grade English teacher at Looderman Middle School. On November 28th and 29th, a gas smell was reported in our building, which consisted of multiple hours and 28-degree weather, sheltering in place at another school, and hundreds of students being picked up out of their caregiver sphere for their safety. Our school staff, after repeated requests, met, met with representatives from the Office of School Support and Well-being a couple of times in the following days of the initial incident, as well as Seth Adams, the Associate Superintendent of the Office of Facilities Management. In these meetings, many of our concerns were dismissed. Semantics, such as whether the system is 20 or 40 years old, do not change the fact that students and staff cannot perform at their best under these conditions. When asked about potential solutions, Mr. Adams stated that there is nothing that can be done for another two years, but we cannot afford to wait any longer than we already have been. Part of the racial equity and social justice statement that precedes the section on allocations to the Office of Facilities Management in the recommended budget for fiscal year 25 reads, quote, "The Office of Facilities Management is dedicated to creating and maintaining physical spaces that not only support academic excellence, but also foster a sense of belonging and equity for every student." Until Looderman's HVAC issues are resolved, this statement is just another empty promise on top of initial promises, such as a community meeting regarding the issue that have not yet been delivered on. The answer to our many students who cannot afford coats and have to sit in 40-degree classrooms for hours at a time was five small space heaters. Pungent gas and burning smells continue daily, except now, we just don't evacuate when it happens. The smell has even begun lingering on my clothes. The requests and concerns of LMS staff have been going ignored for years. We are not delusional to be angry. We are not hysterical because we feel unsafe. What may seem like the slight discomfort of students and staff is in fact a very real and detrimental problem that has been allowed to continue for far too long. I hope the Board will consider their obligations to equity that they themselves put forth by allocating these extremely necessary funds to HVAC repairs and moving Looderman's HVAC reconstruction up to fiscal year 25. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenneth Maton. Please come forward.
My name is Ken Maton. I live in Silver Spring. For three decades, I was lead evaluator of the Meyerhoff Scholars Program at UMBC, now a national model of success for African-American students. I observed firsthand the impact of early and sustained investment of resources by leadership in an innovative, relationship-based initiative. MCPS is presented with a similar, timely opportunity. I am submitting this testimony to request additional funding for full staffing of RJ coaches in every secondary school. I start with a heartfelt thanks to the Board and Dr. McKnight for your support of RJ to date. I'm a recently retired UMBC community psychology professor with expertise in evaluation of programs focused on students of color. I taught about restorative justice, supervised RJ doctoral research, and helped introduce RJ as a resource for students. Locally, I am a member of Jews United for Justice and a participant in Impact Silver Springs's anti-racist activities. MCPS is a data-driven system. Empirical research supports full funding for RJ. The use of RJ in schools nationally has rapidly expanded, reaching 60% of schools. MCPS should be at the forefront of this expansion. Well-designed evaluations underscore the benefits of high-quality RJ. Most striking is the recent 2023 study of Chicago high schools, which found that students in RJ schools showed nearly a 20% decline in suspensions and arrests and improved school climate. Of special note, black males benefited most from RJ, achieving reduced absences, suspensions, and arrests, and enhanced math scores. The findings were centered in schools with high, intensive RJ coaching. These findings bode well for MCPS per the reported decline in suspensions for black males in RJ-focused schools. RJ research also continues to highlight the importance of committed school leadership and a focus on school culture. This aligns with the striking outcomes reported for Argyle Middle School with its RJ-focused leadership and staff. I so wish RJ was available to me. In middle school, when due to being Jewish, I was bullied and assaulted on multiple occasions. When implemented with fidelity, the three pillars of restorative justice would have yielded accountability and relationship instead of shame and isolation. I urge the Board to request funding to hire full-time RJ coaches in every secondary...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Omo Damola Williams. Please come forward.
Nice to see you again. My name is Ahmad Damola Williams and I'm here to address the inconsistencies within the MCPS disciplinary system and why the need of a full-time restorative justice coach is vital for the betterment of all of Montgomery County. Being a father of two little girls in MCPS, my children, my, my two daughters are in elementary, are in elementary school age. I work, I constantly worry about their future with the way the school system is heading when it comes to disciplinary, disciplinary actions. It seems nothing is being done to fight against the school-to-prison pipeline. My concerns are how our children are being disciplined and what would keep them from repeating the same actions that caused them to be in that predicament in the first place. They say, um, SROs, CEOs, that's, that's their new name now, are the answers when it comes to supposedly violent children. There's a difference between, there's a significant difference between utilizing SROs, I'm gonna say SROs, I'm old school. There's a significant difference between utilizing SROs and restorative justice practices. The simple difference is that a teacher can weapons, easily weaponize SROs. And when, when the SRO approaches a student, our students, that atmosphere of hostility is automatically there. SROs, yes, they can utilize some sort of practice of restorative justice, but it's not the same because in the back of their head, they can easily say, look, I, I resort to this, I tried to talk to the kid, I'm done with them, I'm gonna discipline them. When a restorative justice coach is addressing a child's needs, there's a sense of vulnerability because that restorative justice coach can't say, oh, I'm gonna just get you kicked out of the school and ruin your record. I am, I'm an advocate, I do a lot of advocacy. I did a lot of teachings. At Kennedy High School, I asked the students, show of hands, who knows who their restorative justice coach is? Nobody raised their hand. Show of hands, who knows who their, um, security guard is? Everybody raised their hand, right? So, restorative justice is a philosophy and, and an approach to justice and that emphasizes repairing harm caused by wrongdoing, focusing on healing and rebuilding relationships rather than punishment. A full-time restorative justice coach reflects a commitment to creating a supportive and nurturing school community, outsider community, ultimately benefiting the overall well-being and success of the students. Thank you for your time. I know it's a long night and I look forward to what your decisions are. And I'm, I'm done.
Our next speakers are Melissa Regan and Adam Stevens via video. Please play the video.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent McKnight, and MCPS staff members. I am Melissa Regan, arts parent and equity advocate. My testimony is in support of fine arts funding. The arts programs offered to our students K through 12 are essential and frankly have a positive impact on reading and math scores, mental health, and attendance. Shout out to the Chief Academic Officer for a wonderful conversation about these needs. Yet, the budgets for these programs, art, instrumental music, drama, chorus, and dance barely exist. These curriculum-based, diploma-required classes deserve to be funded no differently than science or PE. The proposed budget includes funding for musical instrument purchases and repairs, which staff and students much appreciate. Last week, you heard testimony about Wooten Band Director Ms. Eckerly purchasing instruments with her own money. Teachers should not have to make these purchases themselves. We hope to see this funding in the final budget, as well as what materials, chorus, drama, and art teachers need too. When looking at supervisory staffing, you've got three people trying to manage every program countywide and they deserve one more as you determine where positions are best suited. Thank you, and we also appreciate partnering with the county's Music Educators Association.
Good evening, Board of Education members and Superintendent McKnight. My name is Adam Stevens, instrumental music director at Seneca Valley High School and Vice President of the Montgomery County Music Educators Association. I want to first express my gratitude for the work that's been done on the budget thus far to provide more equitable resources for music students across our district. I'm here today to reinforce the importance of ensuring that the proposed increases in instrument repair and replacement funding make it into the final approved budget. As we continue to work with more students each year, many of whom are from lower-income families, the need for this funding to maintain working inventory cannot be understated. To paint a picture of how desperately the funding is needed, last year, elementary instrumental teachers received an average of 30 cents per student for repairs. Similarly, the funds available for buying new instruments and replacing instruments that are beyond repairable is inadequate to meet the needs of a school system of our size. I also want to acknowledge the support of Board members like Ms. Harris, who have been outspoken in their support of the arts in MCPS. I had the pleasure of running into Ms. Harris at the county honors jazz concert last Saturday at Sherwood High School. Keeping these funding increases in the final budget is a great first step to ensuring that all students in MCPS have access to a high-quality education in the fine arts.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Fernberg, also via video.
My name is Lisa Fernberg. I'm a resident of Rockville. I'm submitting this testimony to ask for additional funding for full staffing of restorative justice coaches in every middle and high school in MCPS. I would like to thank the Board of Education for its initial support of and faith in the power of restorative justice, and I'm grateful to the Superintendent for including funding to at least maintain the current status of RJ in the draft budget for the upcoming school year. I'm a parent of a student at Ritchie Park Elementary School, and I expect that both she and her younger sister will rely on MCPS for their K through 12 education. I want them to be part of a school community that values the humanity of each child and is a partner in shaping our children to take responsibility for their actions, face meaningful and not punitive consequences, and learn the critically important skills of forgiveness and peacemaking. When our children are young, we instinctively teach them that their actions have immediate consequences on the person they have hurt, and we help them to face the person they have wronged and apologize. Likewise, we guide our children to forgive those that have harmed them. While comparison to childhood pushing and shoving and taking of toys is not meant to belittle more serious adolescent misconduct, the moral fabric of our teaching should remain the same. Children, whether aged six, or 12, or 17, are highly malleable by the adults in their lives, even if they try to deny it. The adults that care for our children in our public schools should model the principles of being truly accountable for one's actions and seeking to make whole what has been broken. I believe, and there is plenty of widely available evidence to support, that restorative justice is an investment in our young people that ultimately reduces violence in our schools and in our communities. Restorative justice is still accountability for one's wrongdoing. Restorative justice honors the needs of victims. Restorative justice keeps kids out of prison and can reset their entire life path. I urge the Board of Education to support additional funding for restorative justice and hire full-time RJ coaches in every middle and high school in MCPS. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Debra Boudiani Saberi, also via video.
Greetings. I am Debra Boudiani Saberi of Cabin Town, Maryland. I'm stating this testimony to urge the county to secure additional funding for full staffing of restorative justice coaches in every MCPS middle and high school. Restorative justice practices, or RJPs, are rooted in the principles of nonviolence that understands that hurt people hurt people, and that pain that does not get transformed gets transferred. I'm grateful to the Board of Education for its support... Appendix C-7 for pre-K through 12th grade budget staffing guidelines shows that for elementary schools, there are no formulas for security team leader or security assistant. Please describe what an elementary school's security team assignments look like. How are elementary school students' safety being prioritized? There have been frequent bomb threats and school lockdowns in MCPS this full year. One of the worst mass school shootings occurred at an elementary school in Uvalde, Texas recently. What lessons learned and security improvements have been incorporated in this budget? My final point relates to staffing. In recent years, there has been a consistent theme of requesting an operational workforce of FTEs that did not materialize, which has shown multimillion-dollar savings from laps and instructional salaries being transferred out to fund other programs or categories. According to MCPS's comprehensive annual financial reports over the last 20 years, this trend has been estimated at 2% to 8%, or $12 to $106 million of transfers out of MCPS's instructional salaries category each year. Please stop with the bait and switch and only ask taxpayers to fund MCPS's operations at levels that are achievable, and please reduce the level of transfers out of instructional salaries category. Those funds were budgeted for instructional salaries and should be utilized in the classroom for direct teaching with our students. BOE members, it is time to get back to normalized budgets after three years of extraordinary revenues from federal government SIR funding. It's time for fiscal prudence. Prioritize what matters most because county revenues are finite. Taxpayers are counting on you for increased oversight, transparency, and accountability of our hard-earned tax dollars.
Thank you. Is the same vague here? It says do not submit video here. Nope, okay. All right, that concludes our testimony for tonight. I want to see if my fellow colleagues have any closing remarks before we conclude.
Well, I just, I want to thank everybody for their testimony, but I also wanted to let people know in case they were curious about us not asking a lot of questions. We do have a brand-new financial analyst for the Board, Ms. Patty Foot, if you want to wave. Hello. And so, a lot of our questions are being sent directly to her, and I just wanted everybody to know it's not a lack of interest.
Ms. Evans?
Sure. Thank you all for coming out. And so, we heard quite a bit of testimony from Lorderman Middle School, and although this is the operating budget and not the CIP, I did want the staff to just double back to Lorderman. It's really cold. I know we're not going to be in school tomorrow, but we do not want you to be in that type of setting, and so we actually do care. I hope you know that. So, Mr. Set Adams is not here, so he would be able to speak to what's happening, but I'm just going to ask Dr. McKnight if we could have somebody get back out there so the school is open to take a look at what's going on. I would really appreciate that. And thank you to our students that have come out and to staff that have come here today and stayed late to hear testimony from their cluster coordinators. We really appreciate you all.
Ms. Wolf?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out today. As Ms. Mandrowski said, we were listening intently. A lot of our questions have already been sent over to our new budget analyst. I also want to echo the concerns of Ms... Yes, about Lorderman. So, just know that we will have somebody out there taking a look and trying to get answers to these questions because that raises real concern. Thank you and have a great evening.
Ms. Revetta Ubben?
Also, just wanted to say thank you for saying this late, but if you're a parent, kids have no school tomorrow, so you can sleep in. I just want to echo about Mario Lorderman. I know this reminds me of last year's when we heard about Northwest High School, when they were having their issues with their HVAC unit, and I think we were able to resolve that because climate is important, and we hear you loud and clear. We want our kids to be able to learn and not to be... It's cold enough as it is outside, we don't need to have the same cold inside. And the other thing, I just wanted to see if somebody can follow up. I would like to learn a little bit more about Mr. Moreno's testimony about the counselors. I just wanted to be clear on that because that is an area that, you know, just from having had some amazing counselors in my life and have my kids had amazing counselors in their lives at moments when they had some difficulty with health and so on, they are vital. So, I just, if we can just do a follow-up with that, that would be great, and again, thanks everyone for being here tonight.
Ms. Saye?
First, I want to say thank you for everyone for coming out here and reiterate, thank you for staying late. I know it's definitely not easy, but I think we're all looking forward to the snow day tomorrow. I want to associate myself with the comments of my board members, especially around the HVAC issues in Lorderman. We're very well aware and we're doing, I think, a lot to try and address that. I also want to bring up the importance of restorative justice that I know was brought up a lot today. I think, yes. I know that I remain steadfast in my commitment to ensuring restorative justice is equitably promoted in all of our schools, and we're going to do everything we can to ensure, even with this tight budget year, that we can maintain restorative justice, and I know that has been the interest of the system thus far. So, we're going to continue that work, and we hear you, and I just want to just acknowledge that before we leave here today. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
Dr. McKnight?
Yes. So, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. The testimony really came out strong. Thank you for sharing all of the narratives. As you come up and give your testimony, the stories that you tell, the experiences that you have, help us to better understand why the advocacy is what it is. We knew this year was going to be tough. I've been talking about this year two years ago, when I knew that the... We all knew that the federal funding would end, and we've been calling this year the Esser Cliff. And we knew it was coming, and we knew it was going to be hard, and we knew we were going to be able to make tough decisions. And I will tell you what's been most difficult about it. If you remember when we received the Esser funds, I talked a lot about that gave us the opportunity to be innovative and to try different things and create different types of positions that the school system has not previously had. And we've done that, and what you shared tonight is, a lot of it's been successful. And so, you know, as we've gone through the budget and tried to determine, you know, how can we keep and hold on to some of those successful innovative practices that we've been able to establish, and that of how we reconcile that with everything that we've always already had in the system to try and keep it whole. And so, no matter what your testimony was tonight, know that we heard you. The board members definitely shared all the specific things around why your experiences are so meaningful to them and to us as a system. And just know that as we continue to go through all of our continued budget sessions and we're going through the chapters, we will be talking about, you know, how some of these decisions are difficult and why we then have to prioritize. But I always am optimistic, as someone said tonight, you know, you know, we always... It was Debbie. That's right. We always have to think about what it is that we can do, and I also want to thank you for your commitment to not just be involved in this process right now, but all the way through to the advocacy that happens at the county council level. Tonight, we were talking a lot about additional things that we need, but we need to keep what we already have too. And so, you know, this conversation will continue, but continue to come out. I know we have another hearing. I look forward to hearing from you. Tonight, some of our board members talked about being... You might be able to sleep in tomorrow since the student's out. It might be the opposite for some of you, depending on how old your students are. You may have to get up earlier, but we just really appreciate you, and we will follow up, board members, on those items that you mentioned. I'll ask Mr. Hall, if you can... Mr. Hall, if you can make sure you follow up on the Lorderman piece so that we can send the response to all of the board members about that. We definitely heard that and were aware that there were some issues that happened. And Dr. Collins, if you could also follow up on, was it Mr.?
Marino.
Marino's, yes, Mr. Marino's testimony around the counselors, just so that we can all have a better understanding of exactly what that is. But thank you so much for being here tonight and sharing your testimony. We appreciate you.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I too just want to thank everybody for coming out. Particularly, I really appreciated hearing from Watkins Mill, those powerful student advocates out there in YPP. You guys are doing amazing work, and you're speaking to the needs. You're paying it forward, and I so appreciate that. And I'm very much looking forward to working with Ms. Patty Foot, our budget financial analyst. I've got, I think she's going to be a real gift to us, and I have lots of questions for you. And just associate myself with all of my colleagues' comments, but I did just want to thank everybody for the really thoughtful, constructive, you know, we hear often in these opportunities, public comment hearings, really thoughtful, constructive ideas for things that we can do better, instead of people saying, "Give us more, give us more, give us more." They're really thoughtful about realizing that that's not always what we can do, and so what can we do instead? And so, I really do appreciate that about these opportunities to hear from everybody. So, thank you.
Ms. Yang?
Yes, I will associate myself with many of the... With all the comments my colleague has mentioned, and I think we have some clear themes tonight about retaining our staff, supporting our staff in the school, and make us a designated, you know, employer in the region. And I want to call all of you to show up, to advocate at county council so that we will get our full funding and be able to do all the things that we want to do for the school system. Thank you and have a good rest of the evening.
Okay, real fast, yes, sorry. I wanted to give a shout-out to our school psychologists who came in and told us to take a deep breath, right? I really, I appreciated that. That was great testimony. And then, I got to give a shout-out to SEIU. You stayed to the end. Yes, right. Appreciate you all. So, have a good night and be safe getting home, please.
And we have asked about career pathways.
Thank you so much, everyone, for coming here tonight. Please drive safely, and thank you for your good work. We are adjourned.